I'm gonna go ahead and get us started. I'm gonna call to order our June 13th regular Board of Trustees meeting. I'm gonna open this meeting in honor of Joanne Bozenbark. Kathryn, roll call.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Goff.
Here.
Student trustee Leon.
Here.
Trustee Baldini is absent. Trustee Baker.
Here.
Trustee Segura. And trustee Iverson.
Here.
Thank you.
And now pledge of allegiance. Jeff, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the patience of justice for all.
Thank you. All right, at this point, I do have one change on the, before we adopt the agenda. I'd like to move 13.3, which is our subcontract with Napa County Office of Education, forward, so I'm gonna move it to 9.0, right Kathryn? We've invited Superintendent Barbara Nemko and Andrea Knowlton to speak about the childcare services that they offer. So, with that changed, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Have a motion by trustee Segura and a second by trustee Dodd. Thank you. So, next, we're gonna move to our special recognition. Before we address the resolution, if there's no objections, I'd like to direct staff to fly the rainbow flag in addition to the resolution. Any questions, comments? All right. Thank you. So at this point, I am going to read the resolution. This is recognizing the NVC leadership role in support of the LGBTQ community. So, whereas the stated mission of Napa Valley College is to prepare students for evolving roles in a diverse, dynamic, and interdependent world, and whereas our values statements holds that Napa Valley College values, models, and encourages student success, honesty, creativity, integrity, adaptability, inclusivity, responsibility, openness to new ideas, respect for other, health and wellness, and whereas the superintendent president ensures that the institution undertakes education and training activities to counter discrimination and to prevent, minimize, and/or eliminate any hostile environment that impairs access to equal educational opportunity or impacts the terms and conditions of employment, BP 3430. And whereas the Napa Valley College LGBT education program, one of only three in the state, prepares students who are pursuing careers in a variety of fields that serve LGBTQ populations. This program supports students currently earning certificates or degrees in child development, education, criminal justice, human services, all health occupations, business, and hospitality, and is intended for anyone who works with and serves members of the LGBTQ community. The program also prepares students for transfer colleges and universities offering advanced degrees in LGBT studies, and whereas the Napa Valley Criminal Justice Training Center is a leader in developing a leadership and training curriculum and the first to provide mandated LGBT awareness training for law enforcement professionals all around the state of California. The courses are certified by the California Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training. Now, therefore, be it resolved, what this board recognizes the college's contributions in support of the LGBTQ+ community and pride month through our policies, actions, innovative educational programs, and professional development training. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by trustee Baker. Welcome trustee Baldini, who made the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Do you guys have any questions, comments, or?
I wanted to make a quick comment. I'm pleased about the action to fly the flag as well because I think it's fantastic to do a resolution, but a flag is way more visible to, especially to our students.
Thank you. All right. So, this is public comment, general. Going to read a couple paragraphs, they're short. So this public comment opportunity is governed by the State of California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to listen to concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The board is not able, under the Brown Act, to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to this opportunity to listen to community input. At this time, the board will devote a total of up to 15 minutes for comments to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting, but over which the board has jurisdiction. The public may ask the board to place an item related to the business of the district on a future board agenda. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Individuals will be limited to a five-minute presentation. At this time, I will pull those in attendance. I don't have any speaker cards, but I do see quite a few of you back in the corner. Are those in public planning on speaking on the childcare center? And if so, would you guys, because it's later on in the meeting, would you guys like to speak now? Or do you guys want to wait?
Again, I definitely couldn't because it's on the agenda.
It can, it's his.
It's up to the board chair. Unless there's, do you guys have objections? Would you guys like to wait till later on in the meeting, or speak now? It would be at, if all goes well, it would be at 6 o'clock. Okay, all right.
They want to speak at 6 o'clock.
Okay. So at this point, I have no other speakers, so I'm gonna close public comment and move to public comment on closed session items. This time, the board will devote a total of up to 15 minutes for comments to the Board of Trustees regarding closed session agenda items. Individuals will be limited to a five-minute presentation. Do I have anyone in the audience wanting to speak on closed session? Nope. I'm going to open and close. And we're going to adjourn for closed session.
Say what we're covering.
Sorry. In closed session, we're gonna be covering conference with labor negotiators, 6-2 conference with labor negotiator, and 6-3 public employment, 6-4 conference with labor negotiator. We should, if all goes well, return at 5:30. I'm gonna go ahead and get us started. We do have a few items to report out of closed session. I thought I had to read these. Oh, okay. Correction, we do not have anything to report out of closed session at this time. So this is, yeah, exactly. So, public employment, this is 8.1, consideration enter into an employment agreement. This is an action item. And prior to considering this matter as required by the Government Code, section 54953(c)(3), I am providing an oral summary of the recommendation regarding the salary infringed benefits under the proposed contract. So that's all of these guys, right? So this is Associate Vice President, Human Resources and Training Development, Assistant Superintendent, Vice President, Student Affairs, and Assistant Superintendent, Vice President, Administrative Services. Next to 8.2, renewal of contracts. That was this one. Can I just go out of order? What about? Yeah. Sorry. So, prior to considering this matter as required by Government Code, section 54953(c)(3), I am providing an oral summary of the recommendation regarding the salary infringed benefits under the proposed contracts. This is our interim Assistant Superintendent, Vice President, Academic Affairs. The district is entering into a one-year employment agreement with Fay Smiley as interim Assistant Superintendent, President, Academic Affairs, beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020. Interim Assistant Superintendent, President, Academic Affairs will be placed on step E on the 2019-2020 Associate Vice President. Vice President Assistant Superintendent shall be entitled to receive the same fringe benefits as administrative confidential employee group. So I'm gonna call for action item on all of them, right? We can do that? All right, so, on 8-1, these are all out of order.
That's why, this is on the one you just read, the interim.
Yeah. So this is an action item, so I'm gonna ask for a motion on 8-1.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, my trustee Baker, and a second by trustee Segura. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimous. And?
8-2 is renewal of contracts.
So 8-2 is the renewal of contracts. This was the Associate Vice President, Human Resources, Training Development.
Just the date now is okay.
And the dates, do I have a motion with those?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by trustee Baldini and a second by trustee Goff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Congratulations on that. Next is 8-3. And this is our superintendent president. Again, prior to considering this matter as required by Government Code, section 54953(c)(3), I'll have that memorized by the end of the night. I am providing an oral summary of the recommendation regarding the salary infringed benefits under the proposed contract. So this is a four-year employment contract covering the period July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2023. Salary for the 2019-2020 period is unchanged at this year, as this year is covered under the current contract. Salary for the remaining three years of the contract, beginning July 1st, 2020, is $251,126. Fringe benefits are unchanged from the current contract and include the same health, welfare, and other benefits provided to the district's management personnel and a wellness plan with a maximum value of $1,200 annually. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by trustee Segura and a second by trustee Rios. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Dr. Kraft, you've done a really good job with the district, and the board is very happy and pleased to have you for another four years.
Thank you.
Continuing the good work. And again, to all of our renewals, I don't see Oscar here tonight, but.
Howard can convey the good news to Oscar.
So.
And congratulations to Charles for being.
New title.
Welcome to the new title, new role.
And.
Congratulations Bob for tremendous work and another four years, looking forward to.
Thank you, guys. All right, moving on to reports. 9.1 academic senate report. Are these?
Ah. This is the reorganization. Yeah, we moved an agenda item, the childcare center, to this spot now. So we just need to reorganize in the board document, so it populates it, and then we'll be right to that.
So at this point, I would like to welcome Barb Nemko. Where are you?
She's way back.
Our superintendent of Napa County Office of Education. And you have with you tonight, is it just you?
Hello, I'm Andy Lowes, the director of our Lowes Childhood Education Program.
Wonderful. So I'm gonna.
Do you want me to set it up a little bit?
Sure.
Yeah, what we're gonna do, I don't think we've received any cards, but I think a lot of people want to speak to the issue. So staff is gonna do their presentation first to make sure you have all the information as, that we have. And then the chair will call on folks that want to speak and address the issue just following that brief presentation. Okay? So that's kind of the flow of it. So Barb, well, let's just get to the recommendation, which if we can open up that.
It's not on here yet.
Oh, okay, it's not.
Oh.
8.4.
Instead of 9.3.
Okay.
Charles or Bob, you can weigh in on this as you'd like. And Charles, you want to lead in part of this? So we have the professional services contract agreement between Napa Valley College District and the County Office of Education. Want to explain the parameters to the board, what it really adopts, and then we can also address the other issues surrounding it, any negotiations or personnel matters, or continuation of care issues, maybe the finances, if you will, Bob. And then go to any questions or concerns. And Barb and team are also probably wanting to talk during this section, I would think, Barb. So you might, you might take the podium and just address some of these things, if you would like.
Well, I definitely don't want to upstage Ms. Nemko, but I want to say that is the district's goal and intent to have continued quality childcare for our students and community. And so tonight, we have presented before, before the board a request for an approval for a subcontract with the County Office of Ed. When we looked at our options and looking at how we can reorganize and provide additional services, more so than what we are currently offering, we, when we met with County Office of Ed and learned what they can offer, and I'm not going to upstage my colleagues over here, it became very apparent that this would be a good move for the children who receive service from the CDC. I know that there has been some concern regarding the employment of the CDC staff. As of today, we've signed an MOU with SEIU, securing the employment of all CDC staff. So CDC staff will not lose their jobs. They will not be employed in CDC unless they would like to secure employment with County Office of Ed. So I just want to reiterate again, CDC staff will not lose their, their jobs. They will still have employment with Napa Valley College. We are looking forward to a possible relationship with the County Off, with the County Office of Ed, and looking forward to seeing the excellent services that they provide to the community and hopefully to our NVC community. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. At this point, I'd like to have Barbara Nemko come and present for us and. Thank you for being here this evening.
It's our pleasure to be here. Thank you for having us. To all the parents who are here, I fully understand your concerns. I am a mother and a grandmother, and childcare is the most important thing that we do for our children, good quality childcare. And I know that change is very difficult, and this has been hard to think about. But we're here not because we wanted to take away your programs. We're here because we were asked if we could help. Because the college was not able to continue to provide the program through, in the way it was done because of the cost, we were asked if we could take it over and help out, and that's why we're here. As far as the kind of programs we run, we have been running high-quality inclusive programs from birth through five for many years, for decades. And we are, we have been a state and national leader in this field, winning many awards over the years for our excellent programs. We operate half-day and full-day programs, and we would be operating for somewhat longer hours than you currently have available to you when we take over the program. We are able to manage our programs within the framework of the funding that we get, which means that we operate with slightly different parameters in terms of the position and pay benefits that we can offer. But the qualifications for staff, although we use different titles than the college uses, they're still the same. Our people are as qualified as any staff that you are losing, and we hope that many of the teachers will apply and come to work for us. We will continue to operate within the same space that the programs currently operate, so that it will be very familiar to children who are continuing in the program. And we provide, and we are, we currently provide special education services for the children in the program for those that need it. And so we do that either on-site or for younger children in the home. And we have an excellent parent communication system called Talking Points that allows our teachers to instant message parents. And for parents who may not speak English, it translates. So if our teacher instant messages a parent in English, the parent gets it in their language, and then they can message back in their language, and we get it back in English. So that provides instantaneous and excellent communication. So we are happy to answer any questions that you have that you'd like to ask us, but I think you will find our programs are outstanding. And I think six months from now, you will have zero concerns. Andy, would you like to add something? Andy is our director.
No, I think that, you know, we really want to remain, the college has always been a quality program, and we want it to remain that. We will certainly support a play-based curriculum, and I know you guys do Emilio Reggio now, and we would support that, along with making sure that we meet, you know, you guys complete your DRDPs and then the standards that we have to do, and the same staffing ratios and all that. So we hope that you guys would be interested in working for us. You would be part of a bigger quality team that supports children from American Canyon to Calistoga. We're able to offer a lot of staff development, along with all the other, other teachers and other staff that's available. So we hope you consider applying for the positions that we'll have for you guys. And also, I want to assure parents that the ratios will be the same, or maybe a little higher in each classroom, depending upon, depending upon if your child's an infant, a toddler, or preschooler, but the ratios will be the same. And I know transitions are really difficult, but it's really our intent to be able to keep this program in Napa County and to really serve the parents that are at the college, and then also maybe additional parents that might need to have support and have subsidized care. So that's really our intent. If we didn't do that, the state of California told us that the slots would go out of the county of Napa, that they would be to bid at, could go to any, they could go to Riverside County, any other county. So that was really a smart option for the college to really advocate and work with us so that we could be able to maintain the slots that we have in Napa County for the college. So do you guys have any questions or anything? Mm-hmm. Are they attending the college? Do they attend the college? Yeah, so they could still enroll in the, in with CSP guidelines and also CCTR guidelines. The priority really is enrolling, enrolling families that attend the college on a regular basis. So, and you could really live pretty much anywhere and apply for the funds. Of course, you have to be able to get your child there, but you could do that. Uh-huh. Would? Yes. Are you currently enrolled in the program?
Yes.
Yes, so it would still be available for you. Mm-hmm. Any other? Uh-huh.
I consider, many of us consider the CDC a community. When they cry, we cry. They're there for us when we are at our worst, and they're there raising our children while we are bettering ourselves. So my question is, why can't the teachers transition and stay where they are and be absorbed by the CIO instead of having to reapply at a lower benefit and lower cost and lower performance? They are absolutely wondering, if they're already fully trained, they know this, and they know our children. There has been zero transparency, zero communication, which is where all of this fear has been coming from. I myself cried myself to sleep last night with this. I think one of these teachers, he has been essential for my children. My daughter, when she first started at nine months old, screamed for assistance because she couldn't stand me waiting for me. Teacher Angie and teacher Katie, they've taught her how to adjust herself and taught her how to deal with her children, something I couldn't do. My daughter Amelia has eighty-eight years, and the school's been able to encourage the play, encourage her interaction with everybody, teaching her to slow down and focus. Things that I cannot do. The only reason that I can do any of this is because I feel confident. I feel confident in the people who are even there. And to hear that, yes, they might have a job somewhere else, but they don't have a job here at the center, which is where they have put their heart, their soul, their money, their time, all of these things, and I'm, it's disturbing because I thought we were a community, and it doesn't feel that way. It did when I first started at ILS, and now I'm scared, I'm sad, I feel exhausted, like so many others do. And it just, it could have, I think, it could have been handled much better. Maybe it included the parents. It included the community and asked how we felt about this. What if we were able to fundraise, give grants? We don't know because nobody ever talked to us from a much, much. Politics can come close to us. Why not be involved in this? If we are the priority, if we are what this center runs, how can we be part of it?
This is a part that I can't answer all those questions for you, except for why do they have to apply to come work for us? Because if we're operating the programs, we are responsible to the state. We have to go through our hiring process, and we hope people will hire. Why are the salaries lower? Because we work within the money that we have. We are always trying to raise salaries, but we can only raise them depending on what the state budget gives us to fund the programs. So if we didn't come in, you wouldn't have any program right now. So we're doing the best we can, but I can't, I can't say to you, yes, I know the teachers are worth more money. I know our teachers are worth more money. I, I know that 500%, I promise you. But that doesn't mean I can fix that problem. We can only do what we can do. I'm sorry that we didn't bring some of our parents, because any parent that has a child enrolled in our program would say exactly what you're saying. We're a community. The teachers are able to do things with our children that we couldn't do. We feel like we're family. Absolutely every one of our parents in any of our centers would probably echo what you just said, and I totally empathize. But as far as finances, they are what they are.
Will the teachers that the aides and hourly workers in our center give any priority in choosing and being able to stay here if they apply? Their time, their energy, their effort, the years they put in. Andy, you're fifteen, you're just so much experienced. Will they give priorities if they apply and are approved or?
That's a yes and no. According to our rules, first, we have to open it up to our staff who may want to transfer over. I don't think we're going to see a lot of that. But there may be one or two people who will, they get first priority. Your staff will get second priority, absolutely, and that will be most of it.
That's according to our union agreements. That's, that's how that, that is, yeah. But just to let you know, like Barbara said, I think maybe one or two people may be interested. So, and. Yeah, it's a wonderful place, and, and that piece. So, so that's the process. But we, again, encourage people, and then, then, you know, interview, and we just have to go through the process.
And that.
Mm-hmm, that's okay. While we're here.
As far as the parents and recirculation and all of those things that go on, so that. As far as the parents and recertification and all of those things that go on so that we can get the subsidized program, how is that going to work in transition? We all have different certification times.
Right.
How are we going to do this so that halfway through our semester, you go, oh, sorry, you're not on our level, you don't follow our guidelines, you no longer get care? And so then what are we supposed to do when we're halfway through our semester or...
So I think, you know, we have a, we have a person who does enrollment for us, so I think the idea would be is once this contract is approved, because it needs to be improved by the board, that's what I understand, right?
And I think I can, I'd actually, we can have, hopefully answer some of those questions too through staff. And I was going to turn it over to Mr. Parker about maybe talking about some of the financials and Charles, maybe you can step in on some of the offers in the hiring process, but...
You're welcome.
I don't know if you guys should go, go anywhere yet because we might...
Andy, I think you, I'm not sure you got the tail end of that question, but did you have a follow, did you want to finish your thought process there?
So, what I said, after the contract would be approved, then it's our intention for our enrollment specialist, she does the entire county, to meet with the college, to look at the families and then figure out a process so you're not drunk, but dropped. But there is now year, year-round, you're, once you're approved, you're approved for an entire year, and so then it would just need to come up and then we would need to look at it within a year.
For example, mine's in October.
Right.
So halfway through a semester, you say, oh, sorry, you don't meet our guidelines.
No, I, I think you would. If, if parents are doing it now and you're still continuing to go to school and that, I would think you would meet the guidelines.
Because that's just, that is...
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure it's a big concern. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Did you have a question?
Why did they take the, why did they take the last student?
There was equipment that was removed and they wanted it back.
Oh.
They wanted it coming back to them.
Yes, yes, and we'll make sure that, that you get that back. We'll, we'll buy something new like that. I can understand.
She was very upset, a lot of them.
Yeah.
I would like to say that we are aware of some materials that were removed from various areas of the CDC and those items will be returned. And I did communicate that with the teachers yesterday. All these days are coming together, two, two days ago, yes. So everything will be returned.
And then, then will the guy who's doing the process...
Hopefully very soon, if it hasn't already been done, I will get an answer to that, but I do not have the actual date. But they will be returned. They're still on-site, so.
Okay, so I understand all of everything you guys are saying, but honestly, I'm still concerned because, you know, my kids have been here for quite a long time. Rahul loves all the teachers and, you know, for me, it's heartbreaking to even, to think about that we have to live in those because I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair for the kids because they're the ones that are going to be more affected by it. The kids, because the kids are used to their teachers. They're used to seeing them every day. Personally, my kids love their teachers. My daughter loves teacher, everyone loves all the teachers. My son, he, this is teacher Katie, and goes to her, right away, like this, saying, they love all the teachers and I feel like they're going to be the ones affected by it to see their teachers go. And I'm, for me, I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair to have my kids go through that and see their teachers go because they're wonderful. They're all wonderful teachers.
They are wonderful and I want to know on the record how much they are loved and how much we appreciate them and all their hard work and do nothing, not, 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 not Hovita who cooks all of our nutrition food, nutrition school, we love her. My daughter hates spaghetti, must have had it from her.
Exactly.
Not good. Hovita makes it better. The teachers, when one teacher has a problem, the other teachers rally around, we're a family, someone's breaking up our family, so it automatically jumps there. That's where we're coming from. We love them. My kids, my kids love school.
Exactly.
Mommy, I don't want to be home on the weekends, I want to go to school.
Exactly, that's how my daughter is, she's like, mommy, when we're on teacher, when my daughter's on teacher daddy, they, they love us, they love them. And honestly, for, for him, he was here since like probably around four months. He started around, around there. And if it wasn't for teacher Katie, trust me, she was a wonderful, you know, adapting hand to a new, you know, environment because he had never been on school. And if it wasn't for her, trust me, I don't know what, you know, I don't know what I would have been able to do. And he has learned so much from them, you know, now he talks to me more than what he used to. So I just, you know, I would, I would not like to see them go, none, none of them, none of them, none of them, not one teacher, not one half of them.
How many people can say that?
And I congratulate the teachers on this kind of devotion and love, and that's what we expect, that's what we all want for our children.
They're all MVCs.
I, I understand. In an ideal world, the program could have stayed, but we live in the world we live in and it couldn't. So the choice was not to have a program or to make a change so that we could serve your children. And I prom, that's why I say six months from now, when all of this is over, you will be very happy with the program. And I'm very happy that the college had, has reached agreement with the teachers, that nobody will lose their job. They will still have jobs. I hope some of them will come and apply with us. We're doing the best we can do. And I think all of us together, we feel your pain, we really do, but we have to act within the parameters of what the budget looks like.
And, and echoing Barbara, that, I mean, the board empathizes and it's, it was, we were faced with the decision whether close the program completely or try and make it work. And this is the best fit that we can do, working in those parameters. And I want to give everybody the opportunity to speak, and I don't know if there's more questions out there, but I do also want to hear from the board. Do I have anyone else in the public?
As a part-time employee, been here thirty years, your program takes me where I am. I have a CSB's degree from this college and through a mentor program, I committed myself to the CDC. I will tell you at this time, I have not been informed of anything nor have any other part-time employees. We have not had the respect or the time from our board, from any YAMC, including our administration office, our director, whomever was supposed to communicate with us, we know nothing. And I would come in and find out that we may apply, but we may not have jobs in the end. There are twenty of us, so when you say that the teachers are not going to lose their jobs, that is wrong. Our teachers and our master teachers have been offered other positions at the college. We have not been considered nor spoken to about any of this at all. And I find that when you say we are valued, you are concerned about us, that hourly employees were not valued and we were not concerned about. I have heard rumors in my community, I have people coming up to me asking me about my job. And what I could say is, I don't know. What are you guys hearing? I mean, I've heard that we're being replaced, it's no big deal, we're added here, that the center is headed over to NCOE. None of us have been guaranteed any employment at all whatsoever. So you have twenty employees that do not have jobs. We have families, we have lives. Your teachers have known something has been going on and you guys have been silent this whole entire time. I have five children I take care of. Five children of my own. If, if I'm going to be laid off, if I'm laid off, I get unemployment, but nobody prepared me for what I'm sitting here today dealing with.
These, these are the difficult decisions and again, it's the parameters that we're in. And I'd like, Charles, you have, I think you were going to address that. I mean, it is the goal of this board to, to keep the community alive at the college and to do what's best, and we can answer these questions the best that we can right now, so.
So for all part-time hourly, and the reason why we haven't spoken to you is because we've invited COE to come out and also be a part of the discussion. There are a number of positions that are wonderful opportunities specifically for part-time hourlies that actually have the background that you have where you would meet minimum calls. And so we need to have a separate discussion with part-time hourlies, go over their recruitment process and showcase what opportunities there are. When we were having the discussion with COE, you were definitely a part of the discussion identifying what additional staff we have and how they can be incorporated in this process. So you are absolutely correct. No, we have not been down because we just settled with SEIU, but you will be a part of the discussion and you have been included in the thought process and the planning between COE and MVC. You have been a part of the discussion and we will be having a meeting with you. And so I just had a discussion two days ago with Chantel, the director over the CDC, in letting her know that we do need to make sure that when we come back with our colleagues at COE, that you guys are informed and ready to meet with us. Because I understand with the staffing and the children, it's a strategy to get everyone into a room. And so you have been a part of the discussion, you haven't been forgotten. We just have not, we just finished with SEIU today, signed the memo, the MOU. So you have not been forgotten.
And I understand that we have...
And I'm, I'm sorry...
These are my kids.
Okay.
These are all of my kids. I've stood beside every one of these children through their transitions and through the changes of their lives. My worst fear is the transition for them.
Yes.
How are we going to transition from what I understand, August first, U.A.'s takeover? So July thirty-first, is that our last day? Are we solo C.E., here's new teachers? How are our children going to trans, transition through all of this? How are our classrooms? And how are you going to transition us?
Well, that's what we need to discuss with you and go over the timeframe for recruitment and opportunities, because there are some really good opportunities. Right now, you're a part-time hourly. What they have are full-time positions, excellent opportunities with the benefits.
I have those and I, I do appreciate the opportunity, but my emotion is with the CDC and how we have been treated. It's a great opportunity, but how have we been treated up to this point? As a mom and a teacher and a community for these children and my other teachers, I feel slapped in the face by a college that gave me my opportunity. And I'm hurt and I'm angry, and I have to walk into that classroom with a smile on my face so these babies here can believe that their teachers are okay and we're not. We are crumbling behind the scenes. Look at these faces. These people have taught me to be the teacher that I want to be. I look up to these women and you're taking this opportunity, this beautiful, amazing learning opportunity away from these children. And it feels like it's just, oh, well, no big deal.
It is, it is not in the business of this institution. I don't think you could find anyone in this room that would agree that we're in the business of taking away opportunity, we're in the business of creating opportunity and, and giving education and, and sure, I, I can only imagine how hard this conversation would be this evening if it was closing the center. So we're trying to make the best of the situation and my heart hurts with you. I mean, these aren't easy decisions, but we're going to do the best and it's going to be a good program. These are, NCOE is the best and I'm sorry if you feel left out, but it's, it's not.
You're looking at other faces, other faces of part-time employees that have been left out. We just found out about this on Monday, and the months that you guys have put into this, we find out on Monday. So we've had a couple of days to process this and basically if you can apply, maybe you'll be at the CDC. This was our only option, sorry. You know what? I believe you could have sent an email, you could have given us a heads up. Look, this is what could be happening. We are working with your teachers, the master teachers right now, but we want you aware of your situation. We have no warning. And I think that's very disrespectful for people put in their hours and their time for your college and for these children. That is wrong. We have been disrespected, we have been left out because we weren't allowed to know anything. And that's heartbreaking to know I'm going to be treated like that from a college that I represent away from this campus. I walked away from St. Ronald because I could not stand their teachers and their programs. Your teachers brought me love, care, and respect for myself. I started all over after a fifteen-year position that I didn't qualify to take care of children for anymore, and your college accepted me 100% and put me where I am. And I feel like I've been slapped in the face, disrespected, and discounted. I don't matter because I didn't even have the time to get sense and leave him for a small meeting saying, this is what's going on, please give us time. We need to work this out and then we will bring you in on the discussion. We didn't even get that.
I, I apologize for that experience and we're all learning this evening, so it is something that we will do our best to correct and make sure that those that are all impacted by decisions like this are informed. So, but with that said, I do want to hear from the board because I know that we want to address some of these questions, so I'm going to...
Yeah. Can I, can I comment? And I, I sympathize with you and, and I think that the, all the good that the college gave to you, what you just mentioned, is going to be followed by an opportunity to grow even more so you can be of more service to the other part-time teachers or to the community. And I, I, I understand that you feel disrespected. Charles has said that, you know, you're going to get all the attention and you can discuss all that with her and, and the potential future opportunities. You said it, the college gave you a wonderful opportunity and you should take that with you and you should grow it and you should make the best out of that and teach the rest of your part-timers and the, the rest of the teachers that, that you can only grow from a bad situation, whether it be with the college, whether it be with NCOOCE. It's an opportunity to grow so you can serve as more children, so you can serve as other, other teachers. And every, sometimes every change comes with very sour tastes and you can turn them into sweet. So, you know, I'm sorry that you feel that way and, and hopefully you won't feel that in a couple of months from now. And I know August will be sour as well, but I am very glad that the college gave you that opportunity. Take it and run with it.
So, a little out of normal procedure, but I'm just going to run with it, so anyone else from the board, would you?
I, I just want to say, you know, I also work for an institution that has had to make some pretty deep and painful cuts. My own position was cut last year. I am now moving into a department that had three FTEs a year ago and now we're going to have 1.25 of the same workload. So it's, it's, we're in a tough environment right now and, you know, again, on behalf of the board, I, I would echo what trustee Iverson said that we apologize for the way it was experienced, but I have complete faith in our administration and also in NCOE that this is going to work out and that the children will be cared for and that the teachers will have opportunities as well. So it's, it is, it's going to be hard. Transition is hard, especially when it's transitioned to what feels like less, but I, I have faith that it will work out and it's just going to be a rough road for a little while.
Change is always hard. Any trustee Baldini?
I, I apologize that I too. I'm confident in going forward that the opportunities will present themselves. I, I understand, I come from a large family. I was in fifteen different schools in, in twelve years, K through twelve. I understand the change. I understand new teachers. I understand that the pain and starting all over again and it, 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 it's going to be a little bit different, but in the end, I, I think there's, you see that what you nurture now is, is going to blossom more than you, more than you know. And thank you for expressing yourself this evening.
Trustee Dodd, Rios? I'm gonna call for the question. Do I have a motion on the floor?
That's what you're asking?
That's what I'm asking for, that is the question.
I'll, I'll move, your approval of the contract.
Second. I have a motion for approval of the contract by trustee Baker and a second by trustee Baldini. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Barbara, you have heard a lot from, you know, our, our hearts from the college and I could think of no one better that could take this and steward it and keep it going and possibly grow it into a better program than it was here. And I hope those that have the opportunity to stay here choose to stick with the program and we do what's best for the community and our future. So thank you guys. Anyone else from the public? Thank you. Next, we're gonna move to reports. This is 9.1 Academic Senate. I do not see Eileen Tahara and I do not see a report.
I'd like to ask if one can.
Yes, yes, please.
I really wish that this board would give the community the opportunity to try and make it better. You, you didn't give us the opportunity. I, I realize that this is your last ditch effort, but you didn't give us the opportunity. This is our family and you didn't give us, like mom and dad divorced and they went to opposite sides of the country. Please, next time, next time, give the community a chance. We will surprise you.
So I do not see Eileen Tahara here. So I'm gonna move to 9.2 Administrative Confidential Senate Report. I do not see Mr. Harris, nor do I see a report. Are you gonna jump in there? 9.3 Associated Students of Napa Valley College Report. This is Mr. Christopher Sotelo Hernandez. Did I get it right? No? Alright.
Christopher Hernandez Sotelo.
I stand corrected and I apologize.
Because it's.
Christopher, we worked on that so hard and we still screwed it up.
That's alright. No, no hyphen? One L.
No hyphen, one L.
Yeah, no hyphen.
That kind of hyphen, so thank you. Duly noted.
And other way around. Okay.
Please do. I did read it correctly on my notes here.
Okay. So I go ahead and?
Yep. Report away.
Alright, so hello, everybody. My name is Christopher Hernandez Sotelo. I am the new ASMBC and student body president of Napa Valley College. I look forward to working with everybody through the shared governance process. I would like to start by saying that the new ASMBC board for 2019 and 2020 is not a representation of the previous board or the years before that. I will make it my personal obligation to ensure that minutes are published and make sure that ASMBC fulfills their duties and obligations to the best of our abilities. Since we are barely starting off, I would like to report that AS, ASMBC had a successful retreat. The group bonded well and received a fair amount of training on agendas, Robert's Rules of Orders and how to run a meeting. For the summer, we are planning to have a minimum of two meetings that will be dedicated to preparation and planning for the fall semester. I look forward to working with everybody and making NBC a better place for students and for everybody. Thank you.
Christopher, thank you. The board welcomes you and looks forward to working with you. Please?
Just really quickly, I wanted, I, I didn't get an opportunity to speak with Eileen. So we have sent our new Academic Senate President to the Academic Senate for California Community Colleges Leadership Academy. So she, that's where she is at this week. So she is in Sacramento. I saw photos from the Capitol Building today.
Thank you. Thank you, Christopher. Next is Classified Association Report. Valerie Moore.
It's been quite a month. I have had the pleasure of working closely with HR, the CDC staff and the classified union members on this very issue that was just discussed. And I will say from my point of view that the decisions that were made were thoughtful, conscientious, people were patient and appropriate in the final decisions. In my role as the Classified Union President, it is my responsibility to fight for the jobs that we have and make sure they continue on and exist and allow staff to grow. And we have an agreement that will make that happen. So in that regard, I am thankful for the time we've invested in the past month on this process. And with that, I would like to welcome our new classified staff who will be joining us upon your approval later this evening on this agenda. They are Chadwick Herrera, Brandon Lucas, Tracy Oyama and Maria Ramos Tumayo. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, 9.5 Classified Senate Report. Mr. Martin Shoemaker, I do not see, nor do I see a report. So we will move to 9.6 Faculty Association Report. Kristi Uemoto, who's not here either. Anything? Thank you, Eric. Next, 9.7 Dr. Kraft. This is the president's report. And I think this is where we will be hearing about a little of campus housing.
Yeah, just a, a brief update. I have a handout that I'll just pass this way and we'll make it available to the public and, and moving forward. And I've got a brief, just a very brief PowerPoint that I can talk to. And this is just a, thank you for kind of taking this a, a little bit of time here. Can you open that PowerPoint? Or I can come over there. I think I'll do it, I'll do it over there. Not too much of a, of a detailed update, but just keeping you kind of in the loop. Housing, as you know, is moving along. We found this rather attractive conceptual today. And the reason it was chosen is just to kind of visually start to represent what has been a, a concept. And as we start moving through, I think the more real this feels, several years ago, it was just an idea that the board revisited annually. Then it became more real in a campus master plan as outlined kind of for the future. Then it became more real and more real. And as we started to interpret some of the, the changes in the community, I've just listed here for you in this write-up that's, I'll make available. There, there is just a few updates here. There's changes that really affected the analysis of our feasibility. Engaging emphasis in Napa on housing. I think I remember that the mayor tackled back in, I'm gonna call it 14, at a state of the city. And she said, this is going to be a surprising finding for you all at the state of the city. And she said, you'll never guess what the number one priority in our survey of the community was. And it was, and it was housing. There was a surprise in the room in 14. Nobody recognized at all that housing would be emerging as a, a number one topic. Since 14, we all know, you, you can really feel the momentum. I mean, there, there's seldom a day or definitely not a week that rolls by without something happening in the register about housing or the county or the city. Also, I think it's just changed here from inquiry, what I've called inquiry, to imperative. It is imperative now the city, county, and it may be even potentially, I believe, the college to move forward. The broader public perception of campus housing as separate from any local public taxpayers' burdens is starting to get out there. There was confusion for a bit of whether or not the, the college building housing would cost taxpayers money. I think we've done a pretty good job in clarifying that and the answer is no. All of the funding and fiscal levers that we're looking at do not include any local funding formulas, so there is no taxpayer base here. Scion did a market analysis which indicated demand for housing. Surprising, I think we were, we were all kind of waiting for that to come in. It came in pretty high. And it, and it also showed kind of a student dissatisfaction with, right now is a tough row. So our, our students live locally, 30% live out of the, of the area and drive in. They're not particularly happy about that. Some of that started to show up in the survey. People would rather live here in Napa if they could. One of the things we're going to be talking about in the future is the, what as one article called, the, the hidden cost of commuting. Commuting, commuting is extraordinarily expensive and, and is emerging as a, a number one issue that's related to housing insecurity. People driving hours. And, and the same kind of thing we heard tonight, not only a car, but the cost of that, the cost of healthcare, I'm sorry, childcare for folks while you're commuting, that, all of that doubles down. We'll, we'll talk a little bit about that. Additional survey, which I'll, I'll share tonight of Napa Valley Unified School District, indicates a high demand for staff housing. I'll go through it in just a moment. A second review of the qualified developers from staff, from a capable, large, oh, this may be the wrong information here. I'm sorry, Bob. This, we, we reviewed a, a very qualified, capable, large multinational firm and a capable locally-based developer. They both have extensive knowledge. They both are, they both are qualified. As we started to look at, at the emergence really of a, a local developer versus a larger developer, we're still examining this. I, I'm gonna beg your pardon on this, this bullet, this bullet is an old, is a drafty bullet. It needs to be corrected and you'll see the correct language in the handout that I gave you. Staff also, we really debated whether or not, what a P3 should look like. And we really batted this ball back and forth. We are committed to the 501(c)(3) funding model, which really is no cost to local taxpayers, not a private funding through any individual developer, but a funding model that allows the college in its essence to identify who gets to live in a student housing project versus an individual developer. And also allows the board more control over the, the rents charged, the operating funds charged and the revenues that flow to the college. So it presents the, this balance of the least amount of risk and, and the most control that we could give the board in a, in that combination. Feel good about that. There were several pieces that have developed over the, over the, I'm gonna just call it six months from apartment style to dorm style, units for students. Staff has done a pretty good job, I think, you know, Bob and I have met with several people, we've, we've talked it through. Our very strong feeling at this point is that apartment style, whether or not they're one unit, two unit, three unit or a, a different style, but that apartment style means just what it sounds like. Not a dorm, dormitory, not separate beds with a, with a bathroom down the hall and a kitchen down the hall. And I've detailed a little more in the handout that I gave you. But basically, this provides more flexibility. It addresses more of the needs of a community college student than it, it certainly is not out of the picture for universities who are going after that 18-year-old freshman who's coming in. Maybe that's the way, but that is not our student population. It also gives us more flexibility financially in the future should our demographics change. And we're still, we're looking strongly at that. And then in the apartment style conversation is this refocus. This came up last, last month and has, has talked a little, we've talked a little bit about it. The community college vis a vis a university model. At a university, you are required to have 24/7 everything. You've got students living on campus. Generally, there's fraternities, sororities and it's, it's extensive. So you have to increase literally all of your programs and support. We're not talking about that here. We're talking about a, a single, small apartment unit. And we have very adequate facilities to address that. The only thing that we really think that we might need to do is to employ one more police officer from, to be on duty from 12 to 7, that kind of that third shift. We've checked also with the other community colleges and asked them whether they have, when they have apartment style, whether or not they're expanding their services and they are not. So we're open till nine o'clock most nights with classes. We have administrators here. We, the healthcare center is open. The library serves our students in a, in a great way. If, if this moves forward and, and we are recommending that the board continue to move this way, the possibility of having a couple hundred students on campus is not, is not an overwhelming amount. If they're not, if they were all wanted to rush up every single person out of that, that apartment complex and come to the library, I suppose, but that doesn't, that is not the experience of most community colleges, certainly not ours. Campus Village is the emergent piece that has really caught the attention of the city and county, not only our project, but the conversations in the city, county and in other groups addressing housing, the Napa Housing Coalition, is about workforce housing, keeping people living in the city or the county working here. So we're trying to address this as well. Assist present and future educators and support staff. I think, I think of all our staff, classified administrators, faculty as educators, and I'll use that, that term, in a variety of ways, from support for recruitment and retention, goals for employees. People stay longer if they do not have housing insecurity. And I, I would, I would say to you, we don't use that term too much for faculty, staff and administrators, but it's the same issue. They're still looking for housing. They still, the, the demand, I love kiddos. I grew up with so many kids in the backyard, I can, I cannot even listen to them, but it sounds a little bit like music to me. So I kind of, I kind of like it. Quality of life issues, it's difficult. Our, our staff is kind of scattered around. The, a campus village here that, that we are entertaining, I believe, would be a very high quality of life for the people who would live there. And that is remarkable uniqueness to Napa Valley College. We are where we are. We are central in, in a county that's beautiful and central in a city that has so many amenities within a five-minute walk or a 10-minute drive from this location. It's, it's highly unusual. Safety and welfare issues, we, I would also posit to you that Campus Village would be a safer and more beneficial for, for staff and their families than most neighborhoods. Certainly, I could, I could identify some neighborhoods and I don't have any knowledge of out of the county. Recreation, and this is that live, work, play that's kind of sweeping across the United States. You can, you read stories like I do about faculty and staff being offered that opportunity. And reduced costs for housing and commuting obviously would attribute to people who lived here. There were two other issues that, that kind of rolled up last time. One, is there a need for an environmental, environmental impact report? And the answer is yes. We'll move through that and I've outlined that again in that handout that I gave you. The, the col, you are the board, I'm sorry?
I'm the chair.
Yes, not necessar, yes, yes, please say that. Expand, yeah.
I'm not the board's attorney.
Yeah.
But this is an area.
You're not the board's attorney and you're speaking as a.
As a college entity, as a local agency, we would all need to comply with CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act.
Yeah.
Do an initial study.
Please speak into that a little more. Yeah, thanks.
The college, as the college district, as a local agency, would need to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act. It's just a standard that all, all, all local governments have to comply with when making discretionary decisions. There's different levels of environmental review depending on a preliminary analysis and what that has found. It's all about mitigating any sort of significant impacts. An environmental impact report is kind of the highest level that you need to do for, let's say, a 3,000 home subdivision, right? There's probably going to be traffic impacts, let's say, air quality, GHD or whatever. But just because, and that's an environmental impact report, but then there's also levels, lower levels of environmental review called a mitigated neg deck or a negative declaration. So just small, small.
Thanks.
And that impacts timing, I think it just impacts timing, timeline. So EIR traditionally can take up to a year-long mitigated neg deck. a mitigated neg deck, uh, or a neg deck, uh, you know, six months, potentially a year or two.
Thank you. And trustee does certainly has some background in this and expertise and I spoke with you and tha- thanks for clarifying that. I think the, the reality is we do need to go through the DSA, the, the state architect. Um, that's going to take some time on, on either of these projects. Um, you are the agency of record, so any assessment or eventual piece would come back to you for your, for your um approval. Um, I've spoken with a city who understands that they would have to be engaged as a good neighbor. And then we have traffic and other kind of street concerns. So everybody's really leaning into this at this point and so feeling um positive. I would share with you right now, if, if I was, if I was getting negative feedback from any of the, that kind of political or foundations or anybody else, but it's completely the opposite. They're very excited about the college rolling this direction. Um, we just um got this information back. Oh, it's not, it didn't include it in here because we just got it back. So um I would just state in the handout that I gave, gave you, if you would turn, I'm sorry for the, the general crowd here, but I'll, I'll, I'll provide this. Um, and you may have it here. Do you, did you attach it yet? No, that's fine. Um, NVUSD, so the Napa Valley Unified School District um was also invited and um took advantage of doing the survey for employees and staff. Um, didn't know how it was going to turn out, but the preliminary pieces, a complete survey has not been fully vetted. So don't see more in this than it should be. This is on page two of your handout. Um, very high level of overview indicates total responses, five hundred and sixty-two responded. That's, that's a large group. Um, encouraging as it, full-time teachers, fifty-eight percent, part-time, a few, full-time staff, twenty-seven percent and part-time staff, twelve. Again, if we're looking at staff and teachers are good response. Um, non-homeowners are the most concerned, right? Because they're the people who are more likely to be here. Fifty-eight percent of those said yes, they would consider living in a new rental housing on or near our campus. Thirty-two percent said maybe, ninety percent said yes or maybe. That's, so those two combined, very high number. Um, and, and the, the same kind of survey that we did here was um offered to them. Of all respondents, seventy-five said it's difficult, no surprise here, to find an affordable place to live within an acceptable distance from the campus. That's important language that goes back to what we talked about. Um, winding your way through um, uh, up, up through American Canyon or coming over from Sonoma or coming down adds an hour, an hour and a half to your day. Um, living and working, the potential of living and working in Napa, um, you can do the math. You know, you're, you're really talking about a, a gain for some people of eight to ten quality family hours. You know, these are hours they're going to spend, you know, doing the things they want or going back to school or taking classes here or all those other things. So there's some wonderful pieces here. Of all respondents, eighty-nine said faculty, staff, housing options would be important to attracting and retaining the, the faculty and staff at NVUSD. Um, we've read a few things a- about um that the district, it's important, I think, that, that we could do our part. So that there's two different things you need to think about. One is Campus Village, which is primarily for educators. Um, and one is the student housing, which is exactly um what we talked about. So with that, it's kind of a brief update, but I'm, I'm open for, or Bob and I, or anybody, any staff is open for any other questions. Thanks then. I'll, oh, did you have one? I'm sorry. Yeah, well.
You're just getting close to the mic.
Okay.
Just takes a second.
I think I'll come back over there, Rob, and then we can-
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So on the uh Campus Village portion, um, I know when we started, we started specifically and, and focused on student housing and I know at least I was, you know, let's focus on students and see how we do with that and, and how it develops. And I know now kind of considering the Campus Village, um, another focal point was, you know, for at least in my mind was for uh this college, this district. And one big concern I had when we initially started these discussions and we did have um a lot of uh public input on those first couple of meetings where there was a perception in the public, you know, and with some other organizations that we were building affordable housing for anyone and everyone. Um, which was not where I was coming from because of all the other considerations that would go along with that and potential effects, including negative effects on the campus and our students. The, a Campus Village now sounds to me like it's now uh being thought of as a, a very broad, more, much more open, uh, not just something for the college educators, but maybe NVUSD and maybe for just talking educators even beyond that. That concerns me a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and something I guess that not knowing, we're not, haven't gotten there, haven't discussed it yet, but the parameters of what that might be.
It's, it's a great question. Um, I think the, and, and your, your uh memory is, I think, completely correct. Um, when we started this conversation, there wa- there certainly wasn't, uh, you know, the kind of demand that, that we're hearing, you know, for just a solution. So the county and city and private developers are looking for it, multiple solutions around. So a lot more building has gone on, I, I think, that I ever expected. Um, the Gasser project, I think, was a, was a very strong idea and once they, they're kind of off and running and almost finished. Um, I think two things here, the five oh one C three. W- one of the reasons we decided to really go with that model is that we can, the board can delineate exactly who goes into any one of, either one of these projects. And so saying if we decide that um NVUSD um faculty and staff, you know, meet that criteria, the board so decides, um, only they could, only they could be admitted with our faculty and staff. A sub-piece of that is in our own feasibility study, we just simply don't have enough faculty and staff to build a large enough project to pencil. Um, that was one of the issues um to make it work. So um that was, that was one reason we reached out. And, and the other one was this, the, the change in what I'll just call it, the enrollment patterns and teaching learning. So we're much more involved, you know, we all know, we know high school teachers, you know, um, and um I think, you know, Eric could speak to this, but we really, in fact, a couple of these are coming to you tonight, right? Some agreements. So it, it differentiates, you know, we're having um faculty, we're having students on each, each high school campus teach, there's less of a delineation, I think, than there used to be um between the high school teacher and staff and, and the college staff. The other piece is, it, it just felt um, the, the kind of affiliation, you can help me, Bob, here on think. I think the five oh one C calls out for, you know, college affiliated folks and and there were certainly calls for people to say, well, why don't you expand it to, you know, first responders or nurses, like you're saying. Um, and our reflections really were in and around that. I, I'm just trying to think about the affiliation language.
Yeah, and, and so you're absolutely right. So um there would uh, uh, through the five oh one C three, there would be a requirement that there be some connection to uh the college. And we would determine what that connection is. Um, as Dr. Kraft said, the main reason that we were um reaching out to NVUSD is that we had had discussions that it could be educators or, or that housing would be for educators. The survey results for our own faculty and staff, while there was a strong interest, it wasn't strong enough to really make a viable project. So if we were to include, so what, what would the demand look like if we included educators from outside of Napa Valley College, but still from within Napa? And so that was the motivation for uh reaching out to NVUSD staff, just to see if that demand would make it a viable project for faculty and staff housing as well as the, the results indicated that student housing would be a viable project. But is there a way that faculty and staff housing, because we know that it would help us in recruiting faculty and staff and in retaining faculty and staff if we could offer that uh, uh, to our faculty and staff?
I think the, I'm sorry, no, go ahead. Yeah, please.
Um, I just wanted to add that I know through my own experience that I know teachers who teach for Napa Valley Unified that live as far out as Dixon, Berkeley and Windsor and they're commuting. And these are young teachers and, and I always cringe when budget cuts come and it's those young, excited, innovative teachers that we lose. And one of it is they're willing to drive hours to get here. The other thing that um you should keep in mind is that a lot of these young people that are going into teaching right out of college are either getting their master's degrees within their credentials or continuing their education after they earn their credentials and getting a master's in their subject area, which sets them up really well to become an adjunct faculty when we really get this dual enrollment thing going. So I think you're going to find, or at least I hope we find, that there would be a good balance between um high school teachers really committing to the dual enrollment process and participating as teachers when available and really connecting to the college as Dr. Kraft indicated. So I don't think it's a stretch to say that some high school teachers um shouldn't be part of that. I think that there's a good number of them that you would probably welcome to be involved in, in whatever we put together here. So just to keep those two things in mind, because it is a trend that, that is really speeding up that I've seen and it makes me very happy to see that.
I just want to say I had a lot of the same questions and comments that you had, um, trustee Rios. Um, when, well, when I first got the survey as a, as an NVUSD employee, I went, oh, and what are we, what? And so, yeah, I took the survey. And um, I, when it, my question though, um, with regard to that is these numbers discreetly sound really positive and I know that when we looked at the staff and faculty numbers for NBC that they were kind of eh. What happens when we put those two together? Because that is what I want to know, because I mean, if we were just looking at housing for NVUSD, it looks like a total go. But if we were marginal on the other, how does, how does, what happens when you mix them together?
And the, the shorter answer, short answer is we don't quite know at this point. Um, the survey just closed and so I, I believe Dr. Kraft, correct me if I'm wrong, but these results were just shared, preliminary results were just shared today from Cyon. And so they haven't really done a full analysis of what it means when you put the two together.
To take that perhaps a little further in their presentation at the last board meeting on May ninth and their, their PowerPoint, Cyon presented um, I think, different capture rates. And at, at the seventy percent level, if you take staff and students, it's roughly four hundred and eighty, close to five hundred. So going into the public forum, how is this size without knowing what's available land? Because we haven't done any work in that area. How do, how is this framed as far as sizing or what, uh, what are we looking at? As far as the vertical, the horizontal, or, or what, what is that number being presented to the, to the community? And it's going to be two hundred units or six hundred units or somewhere in between, when that seems quite nebulous at this point.
Yeah, Bob, what about that?
Yeah, sure. So, thanks. So um, at, at this point, the, uh, in terms of students for student beds, we were landing at around three hun-
Three hundred, I think.
Student beds. A- again, we don't have the full analysis for, and of course with faculty and staff housing, it's not beds, it's, it's units. Um, at this point, because the NVUSD results are so new, we don't have the uh, don't really know the full impact of how many units that would be. I would think for it to be viable, it would need to be somewhere in the one hundred to uh, one hundred and fifty unit range, whether it's ten stories up or, you know, takes up-
I'm going to back us down from the number only because these are more market, market rate or they don't have to necessarily be under. Also, I think in prelim pieces, I'll, I'll just add to that. You're perfectly correct in, in what you're saying. That it's, it's a bit of an unknown. We don't know where it would go or how big it would be. Um, I think also, I was going to address this earlier. There's some notion, we have to figure out in, in our next couple of months in, in talking to the project manager and developer and, and analysts, whether or not, does it make sense to plan both? Um, does it make sense to, you know, run the feasibility of pieces? At one point we had said, you know, trustee Rios, you know, why don't we, let's, let's build the housing, the student housing, see how it goes and then come, kind of look at it and see. Um, it's, it's actually a very safe plan to do, but the throughput for faculty housing then would be from right now about a decade or so, all right? Maybe seven years if we, if we had to wait for that, the other buildings to kind of roll out. So we're examining it, a lot of questions, and this one is definitely, the, the Campus Village is more behind the, the power curve, if you will, in terms of understanding than student housing. Um, student housing, we did a fit design, if you remember, Michael, you know, just kind of saying what, what would fit on that high level, dry, easily develop a piece out there. And, and it was basically three hundred. As it turned out, it turned to be, it, it turned out to be not too big. Kind of a Goldilocks number. We feel like, you know, the, the demand is there. So I think they're going to be working on the same thing. Um, it's going to be-
Not, I'm not saying I'm not open to that. I think there's a lot of things that could easily kind of get outside of at least what we were thinking initially that I think could, could have impacts that we weren't, that maybe we were trying to avoid. And you just brought something up that, well, these maybe we're looking at or talking about is more of a market rate. Well, if they're market rate, why are we doing them? The people can't afford to live in the market rate that we have now. So even these new teachers, why, they wouldn't move here because they can't move here now.
Um, that's true.
So just-
That's a good point.
Don't know. I mean, that, again, those, those are great questions. My, my desire, I think yours too, would be to try to have these to be wonderfully clean, beautiful units that would be available for educators at less than what they could, you know, rent in another place. I'm, you know, there's some attraction level of paying market rate. Everything else being equal, would I want to live in something new on the river right downtown next to where I work? Maybe as opposed to some other commuting spot. So uh, there, so many great questions, you know, but, but we'll get to them. We certainly will, to, to Bob's point, be able to do the affiliated groups and we'll have exactly who we would be talking about in an affiliated group in, in both students and this Campus Village concept come August. That, that will all be, you know, answered for us.
Next meeting, right?
I have one quick question. So we were looking at student, kind of in line with trustee Rios and the conversation we just had, but what's that expectation on a timeframe? If we're looking at blending with NVS U S D now with NBC, does that push out the timeframe that we saw or?
No, I think, uh, you know, our initial conversations are the, the student housing project is, is progressing, right? Um, so I, it doesn't change the timeline for that. Um, I think that, well, I don't even know. If, if they're going to pencil really the Campus Village, then who knows what that, what that looks like, how big it would be? Certainly if it's that, if it's big, then that's a longer project and it would, it would come in way later than I think the student housing piece.
So are we, what, it kind, this, you're kind of ans-, I think, answering a question that I was about to ask. Are we kind of really approaching these as two separate things?
They're, they're conceptually different. We're trying to, we're trying to meld as much uh overlap and research as we can together. So um, without confusing the issue. Because, because, you know, certainly we would not say, okay, we would like to do both and we're going, well, we may. And we're going to not do student housing and wait for the other one to be fully developed so we can do them together. That's not what we're saying at this point.
But we could conceivably move forward with the student housing and either put off a decision on the other or make that decision
Absolutely.
Six months out or two years out or is it?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah.
I, I would say-
Thank you for clarifying that because that, that was one of my
Yeah.
Concerns as well.
I, I, I do think there is, at least just to consider the idea to do them together-
I, I do think there is, at least just to consider the idea to do them together. I mean, we were talking about economy of scale here. I mean, we all know how labor costs, construction costs are really expensive. So obviously you have, it's, it's gonna require kind of running it back two times over. Whereas if we have two projects of such a size, you know, we're, we're definitely getting an economy of scale. I was wondering for our master plan, for our facilities master plan, I mean, does it, I don't know if you'd consider it or just give it some thought, Bob too. How does, how does camping, just to be very, what's the word I'm trying to look? Cohesive in terms of how we're thinking about the campus and development? And so I don't know if in, in terms of a scope of work and, and what they're providing, but in, in addition to thinking about housing, but also the larger campus in general and how it all fits. Not saying we'd approve this or that project, whatever is considered outside of student housing, but just so we're telling the community that this is, you know, we're not just being myopic and focusing on, on student housing, but this, the, the larger campus in general.
Yeah, we're working on, we're, we're adapting the name. We've talked about the D C M P, which is a district and campus master plan quite a few times. It's that, it's a, almost all universities and colleges universally across the United States have a campus master plan. And that's probably what, what we'll, we'll call it. And that really talks about the long-term plan for the entire acreage of a site. So that's, that's really, and those conversations will be more multifaceted. We've already had pieces of that. Utilization studies in, in play and we've talked a little bit about that. We've certainly entertained ideas that have bubbled up through the subcommittee on, on real property and those would play into there. And, and these two projects would play into that, along with the project lists from previous, previous bond, the bond project list, those kinds of things. So what we'd like to present to all of you soon, in the, in the early fall, is a comprehensive campus master plan where you can, you can really see what it looks like. We have to work through, on this one, make sure that we work through our shared governance process. It's gotta go to the planning committee. There's, there's plenty of forums and opportunities for faculty and staff and classified to kind of weigh in. But you're exactly right. It'd be really nice if we could just open up that PDF right now and, and see like many universities and colleges, you know, the twenty-year plan, right? It's a lot easier to kind of envision and we need to get that in front of us before we get too far out on either one of these projects.
I wanna keep us moving forward.
Thank you.
Any, anything else? I think we've all weighed in.
I just want to apologize again for the, my bullet in my PowerPoint that was incorrect. So a second review of the qualified developers by staff resulted in deeper analysis and review of the finalists. A capable large multinational firm and a capable locally-based developer has extensive knowledge. Final decision by July to the Board of Trustees, so we'll be coming into July and staff will make that final analysis, so. August, the question was when will the Board award a contract to the finalists? And that will be August twenty-second, which is a special meeting that we have on the books. And it's delayed, so we'll make, we ensure that faculty are back and have an opportunity to go to forums. Students are back, they can go to forums and then we can have the Board kind of more fully informed. So you'll go, that'll be a go, no-go on, on the project.
So that sounds to me like we would be concentrated only on student housing as opposed to the campus village.
I'm not sure what will come to you. It, it may come as a, a part A B. I just don't know. That's our work, we have a lot of work to do in the next month and a half.
Month and a half.
All good stuff. Could spend the whole evening on this one, I'm sure.
Thank you, Carl.
So ten point one, approval of minutes. This is minutes of the last month, or five nine nineteen, regular meeting, proposed. Any changes, corrections? None, all right. I don't need to call for a motion on that, do I? Thank you. All right, so next is consent calendar. It's a pretty lengthy one, I'm sure everybody has looked at it. Be good with the consent calendar? A motion, I have consent. I'm gonna call for motion. So I have a motion by Trustee Baldini and a second by Trustee Rios. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Consent calendar is done. Skip through some pages here. Next is academic affairs. This is an action item. This is twelve point one, college and career access pathways. C cap, it's a partnership agreement with Santa Elena Unified School District. This is really good and I'm sure Oscar would have a lot to say about it too, too. I know he's worked on this, but turn it over to you.
But does, does Eric have anything to say about?
Do we have?
I have nothing to add.
All right.
This is the second reading on, on the, on the document that you saw last month.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Trustee Rios, a second by Trustee Segura. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Twelve point two, and Segura.
Thank you.
Twelve point two, college, this is another C cap partnership with Napa Valley Unified School District, action item. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a motion by Trustee Goff and a second by Trustee Dodd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries unanimously. Twelve point three, curriculum changes for spring of twenty nineteen. It's an action item. And I'll call.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Baker. I was waiting for our new student trustee, but a second by Trustee Goff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving to twelve point four. Report on career education. This is the biannual review. We have our Dean of Career Technical Education, Diane Chaboty. It's an act, info item, it's not action, it's public, sorry. Diana? You are up.
All right, so this is the biannual report on career education. So in order for a program to be considered a career education program, it is delineated by their top code. So there are specific top codes that are assigned to programs that indicate that they are career education programs. There's a big, long list, if you ever want to see it, it's real fun. But that's how we know which programs we need to do this biannual review on. So for any career ed program to be approved, no matter how wonderful we think it is, in order for it to go through the approval process, it needs to meet a labor market demand. So there needs to be a demand for people with those skills and that educational background. And there has to be no undue impact on other colleges. So if we wanted to start a program that Santa Rosa had and they only have maybe ten people in their program, they might say, hey, you can't start that program because you'll take some of our students and it'll make our program not be effective and we won't, we'll have to cut it and those kinds of things. So in the process of developing a program, we check with the local colleges around us. Hey, we want to start this program, do you have any objections? And that's often done faculty to faculty. But just in case, our regional boards, our consortium boards also have a vote on it. So let's say, let's say Santa Rosa Solano said, we don't want you to have that program. I take it to the regional board, I, anyway, I don't care what you say, I'm taking it there. Then they could object at the regional board and say, hey, we're gonna lose our students. A little point of, I find funny and interesting. The only time in the region that I've ever participated where there's been an objection by another college to another college's program has been colleges within the same college district. So, and I personally think they should solve that battle before they come to that board. But usually we all play really well and do our homework before we propose a program to know that it really is needed. Yes.
As an aside, respiratory therapy, we, something like this would allow for collaborations, as is respiratory therapy. Do we still work that with?
We, we don't do it in the same way that we used to, but we could still do that. And we're actually working with some of our partners in creating some mutually complementary scheduling. So we're, we have the same program, but maybe we're, Napa offers that class in fall, but Marin or Santa Rosa offered in, in spring, but in an online format or something so that our students could. So we have a long-range goal of creating schedules together for students in our program. So if they can't take it one place, you can take it at this other place. Thank you. The biannual review per ed code says that we have to look at, is there still a labor demand for this program? So let's say we had a program, I don't know if something, that something's obsolete, I'm sure. Broadcast television we used to have here, no labor demand, right? So that's an issue for, per ed code. Is it creating unnecessary duplication and is it effective? So if we have a program that has a labor demand, but it's not, no one ever enrolls, no one graduates or gets a job, then it's not effective even if we have it. And per ed code, what they, what it says is if we have a program that doesn't meet these, we have to get rid of it. It's really clear that you need to dispense of that program within one year. So we don't need to look at unnecessary duplication because we already knew that. But we do have to look at the other two facets. This is just a list of, of our programs on our campus that have career education top codes. So first of all, I did a little slide like this on all of them. Accounting, is there a labor to market man? I tell you on each slide I'll show you, but what you should know is the main thing for us when we look at this is that there's an increase over the next five years of six point five percent. So we still need accounting programs. I know Bob has some job security here. And we also look at things like average monthly job postings, number of unique postings within a year, all of the, we look at like, I don't know, fifty different elements overall. So I've condensed it down into two that help us make sense of it. What you'll notice in several of the programs is there's a decrease in the number of FTSs for the program, but what you've also noticed over the past year or so is that the college itself has a decrease in FTS. So that's, that, we would expect to see that in some programs, that they would follow the college trend. But there is an increase in transfer. And one of the things about the accounting program is the largest group transferring out of it is our Latinx students. So thirty-nine percent of our transfers are in our Latinx group. And there is an increase in number of degrees. So there's less students, but they're getting more degrees. Does that make sense? So.
Diana, just, it's me.
Oh.
Real quickly, on the, yeah, where's that? The thirty-six eighty-five for market demand? Just real quickly, what's the source of that info for the Board?
We use our MC program, actually Charlie.
So where is it?
I use that we very liberally, Charlie does it.
Is that regionally, statewide, Bay Area?
Usually regionally, unless we have a particular reason to look narrower or broader. Right? So sometimes we might have employers outside of Napa County, but students that want to come to Napa Valley College. So we wouldn't necessarily limit a program to our area if there was gonna be need in a neighboring county.
Good, thank you.
And one of the things about accounting is we have a new full-time tenure track, a faculty member in that program, which I think is significant because also that person moved over five thousand miles to work here at Napa Valley College. So, and that's by plane, but he moved here from Japan. So we are such a prized college, people travel the world to work here. And he's looking at our program and seeing what we need in our accounting program. We have a high student demand for this, this type of coursework. Our administrative administration of justice program has a projected increase over the next five years of eleven point six percent. There's a lot of completers in this program. There's a decrease in FTS, as you know, but there's a net increase in numbers of degrees. And one of the things about our admin of justice program, as with most of our career education programs, the faculty are industry experts. So they, they have faculty that are police officers, retired police officers, subject matter experts in their particular area. So AJs can be a broad area, so you have juvenile justice and court systems and those kinds of things. And we actually have a police chief, so my local police chief teaches here. So the other thing is in two thousand and eighteen, this program earned a gold star from the chancellor's office because of the earnings gains of students with this background, educational background. Meaning, what, and earnings gains means before they start the program, they're at this rate of pay. When they complete, now they can make, they, they don't, can make this, they actually do make an increase in pay. Business and entrepreneurship, still a high labor market demand, as you can tell by the fifteen thousand plus average monthly job postings. And a projected seven point one percent increase over the next five years. Again, decrease in FTS, large increase in transfer. For those of you that were at graduation, you notice there were a lot of AS in business and a lot of ASTs in business. And, and a large increase in number of degrees. I wanted to take a moment to talk about Claudette Chateau. Claudette Chateau is our program coordinator for our business and entrepreneurship program. And the reason I want to talk about her is we don't have any special awards for being just completely awesome, but if we did, Claudette would get it. And the reason it's important is every single career education program coordinator works above and beyond. Quite frankly, we could never pay them, even at minimum wage, for all the work that they do and still be able to exist because they work pretty much around the clock and on weekends and, and all of that. But the reason I wanted to point out Claudette is that Claudette has been selfless with her time and expertise with every other program in the department. If they have a need, a question, she's worked with other programs on campus. And I, I thought as a board, you should know that you have a faculty member here who just constantly and consistently gives of herself to others, not just her program and her students, but to others and has been on the radio and she has just been a tremendous, tremendous asset to our college. And so I wanted you to know her face. So you, when you see her, you can, you can, hopefully you'll let her know how awesome she is.
I also know that she volunteers at her kid's school, so I don't know when she sleeps.
Yes. She started a youth entrepreneur program at the high school, not the high school, the elementary school with first graders. She did a, Charlie, do you remember what it's called? I know, it's like, and they wrote her this book, thank you, thank you for teaching me. First comes first and what, what's important comes first. It's, it's amazing, her work. And she actually wants to do some collaboration with our CFSE program and using that program. She is truly amazing. Child and family studies and education, I split it out a little bit for younger children and older children. A lot of average, average monthly job postings and also the job market is also expected to increase by six to eight percent over the next five years. In this program, we actually have an increase in FTS, a steady increase in transfer. And I'm sorry about the percentage for, oh, actually it is the same percent. The Latinx group is exactly the same for this group. We are actually doing a, some outreach, hopefully next year. Now that the coordinator is now our interim VPAA, we might have a little lag time here, but we are hoping to expand and do a real push with our associate's degree of transfer for elementary teacher ed and do some grow your own projects with our Latinx students to try to get bilingual students to teach in our K-12 system. So, but we are hoping it would start off a little faster, but we might have just a little slowdown. Faculty are engaged in the teacher pipeline project. Also, I don't know if you know this about this program, but they do offer an entry-level certificate at New Tech High School, which allows them and makes them fully qualified to be left alone with children in a licensed center on graduation if they complete that certificate, which is twelve units. And again, as you heard earlier in your, in the resolution you passed, LGBT programs here. And in two thousand and eighteen, they were gold star at the chancellor's office for job and related field. Computer studies, now this program has a little bit of a, you'll see the yellow light. And we, the program content is being looked at to better align with industry need and it needs some retooling. So there is a, there's been a decrease in FTS and a decrease in degrees, but there's an increase in enrollment in our courses that have to do with computer programming. And for the last two summers, we've done cybersecurity camps. So the, the program is a little bit antiquated and so we are shifting it. And hopefully you'll see by next year or the following year, a program that's more reflective of what students need and what the labor market is showing those skills are. So the program itself just needs some retooling. This digital design and graphics technology, again, there's an undersupply of, of graduates. This student is, this program is hard to get labor market data on because it's architectural and it's also three D modeling. So it's a little bit tricky, but I can assure you there is a large labor market and an expected eighteen, eight percent over the next five years, an increase in FTS, an increase in degrees, and they are developing some more classes and will eventually be going into. and they are developing some more classes and will eventually be going into holograms, you know, virtual stuff. So, we're just getting the equipment for that. And also, this program was recognized by the chancellor's office in 217 for an earnings boost of 338% for students that complete the program, which I don't know about you, but I would really love a 338% raise. And we're also, in case you don't know, an Autodesk certification center. And in order for us to do that, the coordinator in this program, Gary Straumann, has to also maintain his certification, which is similar to how our nursing faculty have to maintain their license. Gary has to maintain his. EMT paramedic, again, look at the projected growth in this area, 17.2%. It's a huge, huge growth for this one. And our paramedic program continues to graduate students at a high rate. Their passage rate on their national exam is over 90%. So, that is a very commendable percentage rate. Scott Rose coordinates the program, but he also continued his work in industry. Many of our faculty in health, OCH, still work in hospitals or in ambulances, and that's one of the things that they can bring to our students, and what helps our students be so successful is that our, our faculty are still current in the industry. And again, a 2008 chancellor's office gold star. Don't you always think of those little sticky stars? You guys remember those from like elementary school? Put your star by your name if you know your alphabet or whatever. By the way, not a big fan of those alphabet charts. For earnings gain and regional living wage. Hospitality, culinary, and tourism management. There are, again, lots of job postings, we're expecting an increase, consistent number of FTSs, so some of our programs have dropped. This actually has stayed pretty consistent, and we are increasing the degrees. We've done a lot of revamping of that program under the direction of Merrick McKeeg. And scholar eats. Everyone knows what that is, right? All right. So, there's the, I don't know if you've seen the before and after picture of the food truck, but Merrick, all that blue actually pills off. Merrick did it. He heated it up with a little hand blower and peeled it off. I'm telling you, career ed faculty, very committed. Human services is a program on our campus that's actually growing, as you can see, a 13.7% increase over the next five years, an increase in FTS after a steady drop, and an increase in number of degrees also. The other thing about this program is there's a, a new full-time faculty member in this program that's helping, has having in fact. So, one of the things that we know about full-time faculty and, and programs that have only one full-time faculty, it's so important to help students be successful in those programs. Machine tool technology, there's still labor market demand, absolutely, and steady number of FTSs. And a chancellor's office gold star for, oh, Lord, the percentage of earnings going up, 338%. Nursing is still a large labor market demand, and there's still labor to market demand also for our LVN students at 10.3% for projected growth over the next five years. There's a decrease in FTS, and you'll notice a decrease in number of degrees, but an increase in transfer. So, sometimes bachelors in nursing is now a very popular and in some areas an expected thing. So, we have students that are qualified to be nurses and then getting their bachelor's degree rather than getting the two-year degree first is probably what we would notice if we kind of disaggregate those by student. Gold star in 2018 for earnings gain and regional living wage and a 90% plus for first attempt at passing their state test, their licensure. Police academy, 5.2 projected increase, a little bit of a decrease in FTS from our data source, but I don't know about you, if you read the paper, you see the posters. There's lots of openings for our police officers. And our law enforcement program's got a gold star from the chancellor's office for earnings gain and regional living wage. Psychiatric tech, 320 average monthly openings, only a, it's a smaller projected increase over the next five years of only 0.5%. Projections can change sometimes by the day, but there's an increased number in FTS after a decrease and an increased number in degrees. Also, the program has their students, you'll notice that they were all offered pre-licensure jobs. So, you have a job as long as you pass that exam. So, it is a pretty big deal. And I put pretty big deal there because that's what Bob Harris said to me, "This is a pretty big deal, Diana." So, I thought I would share, it was a pretty big deal. And then, I already mentioned the star. Respiratory care, this program actually has a lot of recognition statewide. It's, you see the decrease in FTS, but the increase in number of degrees, which is a bonus. But this program has national recognition for the second year in a row for its excellence in graduation rates, exam pass rates, and graduates securing employment in their field quickly. And the full-time faculty in this program continue to work in industry. There is, there really is not, I, I can't express to you how important it is for faculty in career ed programs to have access to industry. Not just to get their teaching job at the college, but to have opportunities for externships and those kinds of things to work in industry to keep them current in the field. And we see that in the success rate of our students. And a gold star in 2018 from the chancellor's office for a boost in earnings of 213%. 83% have a regional living wage and 100% report securing a job closely related to their field of study. They also receive special recognition, you know, they have another link on the chancellor's office webpage for that, over the three-year, year span, they had these success rates, but they also have, were recognized for their equity rate for underrepresented populations for African-American, black students at 87%, Hispanic students at 89.6%. So, they are, they are knocking it out of the park. Viticulture and winery technology has a projected 63 months job, 63 jobs posted in a month, 2%, oh, lurch, I'm not very good with non-max. 2% increase over the next five years. There's a little bit of a decrease in FTS and a decrease in number of degrees, but what we know from what we do and the number of wineries that are everywhere now, anyone who has a spare acre thinks they can grow a vineyard, it seems. So, they're going to be coming to us soon because I, my understanding from Molly is that growing grapes is harder than we might think. But the program itself has done a lot of retooling that we don't show in data, and we have purchased them some really state-of-the-art equipment so that the students are actually doing research and test samples and doing some experimentation along with the making of the wine to see what things that you do and you tweak, how it impacts your end product. So, we are getting a, I would argue that the students are having the opportunity to become more skilled in their field, and the job demand is changing as wineries become more automated, right? So, machines are doing things. We need, the students need to be more aware of the making of and the growing of as opposed to some of the, I guess, lower skilled jobs in a winery, which is getting automated.
Do you find in this program that maybe a student will show up just to take one class or interested in, in this area, and that may be why you're seeing a decrease in the number of degrees and full-time students? It's kind of a one-off.
Yeah, yeah. And it's, you know, it also depends on, there's so many jobs right now, right? So, unemployment, so...
Right.
And these jobs, these jobs are not necessarily nine-to-five jobs.
Right.
So, it's really hard to do a class schedule when your, your hours change by day. The program is looking at changing some of the way they offer their classes and, but we do get students, it's interesting, students will come here wanting to study wine making, but then they still take the vineyard classes, which I personally think is great, that they're learning, you know, what happens with that grape affects how it tastes in your bottle.
Right. Okay.
And the program, Molly is writing an advanced viticulture class, which we've never had here. So, we are pretty excited. Hopefully, that'll be here by next spring. So, they are doing some really, really good experimentation and exploration with their students, which we don't see a lot of times in, in viticulture programs, and it makes our program very unique. And they were recognized in 17 for 100% of students getting a job in their field of study. So, they are clearly taking our classes and then going to work or continuing their work in the, in the field. And for chancellor's office in 2018 for regional living wage. Welding has an 8.7% increase over the next five years. This program is like bursting at the seams. Thank you for approving the welding hire. We, really, they're, they're packed. Our boot camp had a waitlist. Eric Wade let them all in. It's quite an amazing classroom to be in, everybody with blowtorches. Careful, wear boots, glasses. But it is quite amazing, and we do something other programs don't do, and that's our certification days that Eric Wade hosts. And again, Eric Wade still works in his, in industry, and he has his own business, and our students become very, very skilled. And the instructor that you approved for us to hire completed our program and is a skilled welder. Part of our process includes welding, and it was, it was a good piece of work. So, we like to put people in front of our students that are good at what they do. And they have a 2017 star for, again, boost in, in weld, in earnings. And they are also offered jobs often before they finish. In fact, a lot of times they don't finish because they've got a job paying a lot of money. Allied health in general, so that's all of our health programs in general, got stars in 2017. Job placement rates, so this is an accreditation standard. So, Robin does this with us and helps us look at placement rates, current standard, proposed standard, actual performance, and our stretch goal. And I was going to give you all the data, but it really is only exciting probably to me, looking at the little charts. But what I wanted to have you is per our research planning and institutional effectiveness office, I took these right from Robin's email. So, hopefully, she wasn't just being nice. All CTE programs' recent performance has exceeded the proposed stretch goal on at least one occasion. And so, what's really important about that is the faculty have said, "I think I can do this." Like, "I think we can get our students here," and they've exceeded, and they're working in their field. So, then she said, "The programs within CEWD, career ed workforce development, have been performing at such a high level on job placement that I think they should be identifying higher stretch goals to align with the aspirational aspect of a stretched goal." So, you know, on one hand, that is such a compliment. On the other hand, it's a little bit scary. They do a very, very good job, and so it's like, "Okay, let's do more." And then, if this works, which, you know, it might not.
If it doesn't work, you have to act it out.
Yes. I agree. Okay, wait. Do I have to dance?
Yeah.
Yeah! Yay! So, now I'll go to the next slide. So, what I wanted to point out is, yay! So, the good news is, we don't have to get rid of any of our programs that we have on that page, but I wanted to put the list of the programs up here because these programs are successful as a direct result of the individuals listed on this table. These individuals coordinate these programs, they make sure that the content in the classes is current, they work with their part-time faculty to, to meet the standard that they're setting for their students, and they tires tirelessly respond to students and all of the emails that I send them. So, seriously, if you see these individuals on campus or someone says, "I'm so-and-so," and you don't know who they are, and they say they coordinate one of these programs, I hope that you acknowledge the work that they do because they have created tremendous, wonderful, successful programs, and their heart and soul is in these programs. And you can tell that it's there because their students are knocking it out of the park, and you should be proud that you have these programs at your college. Questions?
Well, one, thank you very much, Diana. I appreciate your enthusiasm and thoroughness. The, the last one, respiratory therapist, he's retired. Will he continue on in that role?
He has retired. He's going to work in the field.
Yes, yes.
He's staying in the, the hospitals.
Are there areas of, of job postings in the region that we don't have a program for on the CTE side?
You know, I actually, because I know we always have that kind of subtle competition with our neighboring colleges, I took all of those CTE programs with the asterisks that we could possibly have, and I went through them compared to all of the colleges that are our neighbors to see what is it no one has that has a labor market demand, is not going to require me to build a new building, because we all know what that means, and that would fit a need for our area where we're at. And there is only one program that really fits that. And now, we can do tweaking in some of these and create different certificates and focus, but there's only one program that really fits that. And that is, anyone want to hazard a guess? Got a high labor market.
Nursing.
Funeral.
Oh, we got nursing. Okay, I'm going to tell you, starts with an M. Ready? Hang on. M?
M.
M. I kind of want to go there tomorrow to the spa and get a massage. Doesn't take a lot of space, you need tables, but that is the only program. There are some other liabilities with it besides, besides space, but we don't have to build a building. But, you know, it doesn't mean new technologies won't come up. So, remember I said Gary in our DGGT program? He's looking at, he's got a fancy name for it. Do you remember the name of the machine? Augmented reality stuff. So, that will be coming soon within our DGGT program. We're just looking to, the technology is very new still, and so we've got to get it, and then we've got to play with it and see, you know, I don't do this stuff, so there's stuff you do with it, and it's really cool. But Gary knows his stuff, and he, again, still works in industry. So, that will be coming. So, we have some stuff like that that will be coming to, to flesh out and build and, and enrich what we have, but the, as far as a new, separate, different program that would not cost us a ton of money to build a new building for, the main thing is massage, although you got the licensure and some liability stuff, but...
With such a high demand on the nursing program, will we ever grow it, or?
One of the reasons, the limitations about expanding our health occupations in general is practicum space for them to do their clinicals. There's not enough spots in the hospitals because the, the hospitals that are around, all the other colleges are sending their people too. So, Eric, I don't know if you want to comment on that, but that's what limits us, is clinical sites.
Yeah, the search for clinical space is one of the things that takes up an inordinate amount of time for those program coordinators that were on that table beforehand. That's one of the primary things that they do is find locations for the students to go to. And Diane is absolutely correct, it's, it's saturated, and it's difficult oftentimes to find those placement sites.
Students drive far. I mean, we have students that commute to, you know, Oakland Children's. I mean, it seems close, but not at 7:00 a.m. So, that is the limitation.
It's a shame that we're right here and we don't get first come, first served.
I know. But we turn out awesome people.
Yes, you do. Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Thank you.
Other questions?
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thanks, Diana. Very nice.
Yeah. All right. Next is 12.5, Napa County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Agreement. It's an action item. I have a motion.
So moved.
Of a motion by our new student trustee Pablo and a second by trustee Baldini. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And moving on to 13, this is administrative services and information. First up, 13.1, this is our 2019 to 20 tentative budget.
It's action.
It's an action item. I'm going to lean on our audit committee chair, trustee Baker. Do you have a recommendation or report for us?
I, yes. Did you want to do your show or no? It makes...
I would just say for the, I mean, trying to keep us on pace, my pace, I guess, would be if you have a recommendation, unless someone has a question and you want to go for the, do you want, for Parker?
Yeah, I have a question for Parker.
Do you want to see the report? Do you want to see the report?
Last week, yes.
On the fourth, yeah.
Last Tuesday.
It's been a long week. And we would do the whole process, and we were pleased with it, and it was our recommendation to the board accept and include it. And so, but if you have questions, you might see the presentation.
I just have a question. I think it was about, you know, in the sections where it talks about the different areas and the requested budget amounts, I saw a couple of things in there that just raised these questions. One was that, I forget which group it was, but there were several requests for classrooms.
Yes.
What does that mean? I mean, does that mean physical space? Does that mean another section? What does that mean?
Oh, so, what it actually means is that they were asking for classrooms, some conversion of classrooms, and it's primarily computer equipment and classroom furniture as well. So, to make, we have for, and this was specifically for, I believe it was statistics, and then also some requests for English. And it was to make the classrooms more by furnishings and by computer equipment, to make them more adaptable and to make them more usable for, this is all specifically related to AB 705, and to make sure that these classrooms are spaces that can be utilized for the changes in pedagogy. And I'm sorry that Vice President Sheeran ran away, but, because he could answer this question much better than I can, but that it will facilitate the changes that are being made in the curriculum in order to address the changes required to respond to AB 705.
Okay, thank you. Just one other quick question. I saw in there, I think, maybe one or two requests for budget for additional release time, I think it was the term.
Yes.
I thought, some time ago, we've had discussions about trying to reduce that so that faculty, staff are able to actually teach the courses that they were supposed to be teaching.
And so, most of those requests for additional release time, again, are related to AB 705. I think you saw two requests in there for additional release time for ESL coordination, and I believe there was a request for, so you see on the screen right now, the two, temporary and then an ongoing request for ESL coordinator reassigned time, and then release time further down that page for the transfer English corequisite learning communities. Both of those are related to AB 705 and the impact that it will have on the English instruction.
Thank you.
I had a question as well. On slide number 25, and this may be because I've never read one of these, on the state general apportionments, you have $0 in your adopted budget, but then year-end projection was over $350,000, and then the tentative budget has zero again. Is there a reason why you don't put a tentative number in there?
So, we are not expecting, and in fact, the money that we actually received in this fiscal year was a surprise to us. So, the fact that we are now community-supported, or what's called a basic aid district, means that we don't qualify for apportionment. There were some one-time funds available this year, and the state distributed them to all colleges, including basic aid districts. So, the $379,000 that we got this year was an anomaly. We are not expecting that to happen again next year.
Will you remove that line item, then, from future budgets?
Well, we've been keeping it in there just to point out the fact that we are community-supported, or a basic aid district. At some point, we'll get over that, and we'll probably, we'll probably take that line item out.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. It is an action item. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Rios, and a second by trustee Segura. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And next up is our 13.2, our five-year capital outlay, construction plan, and district order of priority. This is an action item. And again, I'll turn to Mr. Robert Parker.
And if I just very quickly could point a few things out on this slide, and unfortunately, Matt Christensen, who was to present this, couldn't be here tonight, so you're stuck with the second team. But I do want to indicate that priority number one, Building 3100, Machine Tool Welding Modernization, you see next to that, under status, it says FPP. That's what the state refers to as a final project plan. And so, we are able to have one final project plan and one initial project plan every year. The good news is that we just learned last week, I've actually recently been appointed to the ACBO Facilities Task Force that meets at the chancellor's office quarterly. And at that meeting, the list of projects that will be funded, that are slated to be funded in 2021, was presented, and our Building 3100 Machine Tool Welding Modernization Program was on that list. So, we are expecting to get some state funding for that project. We're a little limited in what we can ask for state funding for. State funding, there are three priorities. The first is fire and safety issues. Luckily, we don't have any of those. The second is growth, and since we are not growing in terms of students, we don't qualify in that regard. But the third is modernization. And we have four buildings on campus that qualify for modernization funds, one of them being the Machine Tool Welding Building. And so, that's the category that that building comes in under.
Could I have a second on, yes?
We have not.
Some of, and I have a question.
I have a motion by trustee Baldini. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by trustee Baker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries unanimous.
Just one question to follow up with what you were saying, Mr. Parker. Back in 2016, the 1400 classroom modernization was down at six, so it's been propelled to two. Is that because the IPP, the state and local funds?
That's correct.
Built it to that location?
That's correct, yes. So, that was, the other two buildings that we have that qualify for modernization are the 1600 building and the 1800 building. If you remember, though, a while back, when we looked at modernizing the 1800 building as in its current use as a science lab, we determined that we'd actually lose lab space through the modernization. So, the modernization of that building dropped a little further down because we would modernize that building after we build another science lab building. So, then that would qualify for modernization. So, if you look at the 1400 building and the 1600 building, the project that makes the most sense for us in terms of dollars that would come in is the 1400 building. So, that's why that's in the number two slot.
Right, thank you.
That kind of just triggered a question, but, so like, the 1600 building, for example, is it possible to use, like, philanthropic funds in addition to the state and local funds?
Oh, absolutely. And I will say that state and local funds do require some degree of match. So, the state funds will not pay the entire cost of modernizing any of these buildings, but local funds and philanthropic funds could be used for that state, for that match of the state funds.
And is it always just one per college and across the state?
It is, yes. So, there is a limit to the number. Now, you might see multi-college districts that have more than one project, but it is one per college across the state.
Interesting. Thank you, Mr. Parker. All right. 13.3, this is, oh, we already did that, sorry, we moved that to nine. 13.4, Resolution for California Department of Education, CSP 9326 agreement. It's an action item. Do we have questions on that? Did it get renumbered or something? Did they call it something different? Oh, no, it's 13.3. I'm with you.
These are the monies that we accept to run the childcare center, which would then be, and the ones that would be used by the Napa County Office of Education. So, accepting these is a good thing.
I have a motion by trustee Dodd. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Goff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries unanimously. Next, 13.5, Resolution for California Department of Education, CCTR 9149 agreement. This is an action item.
13.5?
Oh, I'm sorry, 13.4, sorry. I'm reading off the old one before it got updated.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by trustee Dodd. Do I have a second? I have a second by trustee Baldini. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And now, 13, oh, we're on public hearing. This is item 14.1, Napa Valley College Faculty Association, CCA, CTA, NEA. It's 2019 to 2020 initial proposal for negotiations. So, I'm going to open for public comment on each of these proposals. That's the faculty proposal and the district proposal. So, open the public hearing now. Do I have anyone in the public? Nope. All right. I'm going to close public comment, public hearing. It was a very quick public hearing. And that was for 14.1. And 14.2, I did that together, right?
No. Yeah. Now, you need to, yeah.
This is another public hearing, 14.2, Napa Valley Community College District, 2019-2020 initial proposal for negotiations with the Napa Valley College Faculty Association, CCA, CTA, and NEA. I'm opening public comment. And I don't hear any public comment, so public hearing is now closed. All right. Human Resources, Information, Discussion, and Action Items. We have an action item. This is 15.1, Approval of the Napa Valley Community College District, 2019-20 initial proposal for negotiations with the Napa Valley College Faculty Association, CCA, CTA, and NEA. Again, this is action.
For approval?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Baldini, and a second by trustee Segura. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries unanimously. 15.2, this is acceptance of 2019-20 initial proposal for negotiations from the Napa Valley College Faculty Association, CCA, CTA, NEA. It's an action item. Do I have a motion on the floor?
So move.
I have a motion by trustee Baldini. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by trustee Goff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries unanimously. Moving to 16, this is Student Affairs, Information, Discussion, and Action Items. We have 16.1, NVC Student Equity Plan. This is required by the chancellor's office. This is an action item, and we have presentation by Christopher Farmer and Dr. Robin Warrenhall.
Good evening, Board. Chris and I are here to present the Student Equity Plan for your approval. First, I'm going to provide some context for the 2019 Student Equity Plan relative to other institutional plans and the California Community Colleges Chancellor's Office requirements. I will also present some information about the data and cases of disproportionate impact that were found, and the goals that were established to address those disproportionate impacts. Chris is then going to provide information about the activities outlined in the Student Equity Plan. And following the presentation, both of us, as well as other members of the subcommittee that was tasked with drafting this plan, and that includes Howard Willis and Louise Alkazar, are happy to answer questions that you might have. So, this is not the first Student Equity Plan that we have submitted to the chancellor's office. Over the past five academic years, we have submitted two plans that were focused on student equity, and one integrated plan spanning student equity as well as the Student Success and Support Program, which is the SSSP, and the Basic Skills Initiative simultaneously. The 2019 Student Equity Plan is a three-year plan, which would span through 2021, 2022, to align with the Vision for Success. Earlier this year, the chancellor's office outlined expectations regarding what they're calling coherence in goal-setting and planning. And as conveyed in the timeline included in this slide, which is from the chancellor's office memo, the expectation for coherence includes our local Vision for Success Goals, which were approved by the Board of Trustees last month, the Student Equity Plan, which is due at the end of this month, the Guided Pathways Scale of Adoption Self-Assessment, which will be finalized and submitted in the fall, and the final adopted budget, which will also be due in the fall. The data to inform the development of our Student Equity Plan was provided by the chancellor's office. There were five metrics included in the data set, and they're listed here in sequential order along the student progression. So, the first metric is students who applied to and enrolled in the same community college. Then, it's those who were retained from fall to spring at the same college, those that completed both transfer-level math and English within the same district in the first year, students that attained the Vision for Success Goal Completion Definition, which is completion of a degree or certificate, and then finally, students that transferred to four-year institutions. For the purposes of the Student Equity Plan, groups were defined by gender in combination with another demographic descriptor. So, those include disability status, foster youth, LGBT, race, ethnicity, and veteran status. Disproportionate impacts were identified in the data set for groups such as female veterans and male foster youth. So, it's a combination of gender plus something else. The plan before you this evening was drafted by a subcommittee of the Equity and Inclusivity Committee, and members of the subcommittee are listed here. The subcommittee reviewed data, established goals at the institutional level, that's for general improvement across the five metrics, and among groups that were flagged for disproportionate impact on specific metrics. As part of the goal-setting for disproportionately impacted groups, the subcommittee incorporated the Vision for Success Goals to help ensure the coherence between the two plans. The subcommittee also identified activities to help attain the goals identified in the plan. So, there were 36 cases of disproportionate impact for Napa Valley College, and they're listed here for each of the five metrics. And just to kind of unpack that table for you, so for the first metric, for successful enrollment or the application to enrollment conversion rate, we had seven cases of disproportionate impact. The seven impacted groups are identified in the second column. You'll note that six of the seven cases involve females, and that's noted by the F in parentheses following each group description. So, it's female in combination with another demographic description. You might recall that there were five disproportionately impacted groups identified for the Vision for Success Goals associated with completion and transfer. The overlapping or aligned cases of disproportionate impact between the two plans are underlined in the second column. So, that is the Black African-American students on the vision goal attainment metric. And finally, in this table, the third column lists the additional disproportionately impacted groups from the Vision for Success that have been incorporated into the Equity Plan. This slide summarizes patterns among the 36 cases of disproportionate impact for NVC. The majority of cases of disproportionate impact involve relatively small groups of students, and that's defined as less than 15 students. Of the remaining 13 cases, 10 involve females, three involved Black or African-American students, two involve foster youth, two involve white students, and two involve some other race. These results reflect the findings from past Student Equity Plans, particularly for Black African-American students and foster youth. The goals for the overall student population are to increase the number of student successes on each metric by the on each metric by the percentage noted in the table. And you'll note that the goals for the three metrics, the, the final three metrics are significantly higher than those for the first two metrics. And this aligns with A B seven oh five implementation plans for the coming year, which have been alluded to a few times already this evening, and also to align with the Vision for Success Goals established for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, particularly on the attainment of a vision goal and the transfer-related metric. The template provided by the chancellor's office identifies two thresholds for achieving equity among the disproportionately impacted groups. And the two thresholds are minimum equity, which would get the group within close range of the performance of the overall student population. And the second option is full equity, which would eliminate the discrepancy between the group's performance and the performance of the overall student population. So, as indicated in the final column of the table here, the subcommittee identif, or adopted a uniform approach for all disproportionately impacted groups on the individual metrics by selecting minimum equity for the first metric and full equity across the other four.
So, I was asked to, well, hi, my name is Chris Farmer. For those of you who haven't had the opportunity to meet me yet, I sounded arrogant, but so, so I was asked to speak on how we developed our activities for the plan. And I can say it was a very different experience this time doing the Student Equity Plan than previous plans. And I think that's a credit to previous equity efforts, that there are a lot of good ideas on this campus already. So, that was the approach we took. First, we went back to previous Student Equity Plans and looked at the things that we felt like we hadn't quite done a good job of and moved those forward into this one. And then we went through unit plans and integrated plan and looked at what other people were proposing and things that were bubbling up from the institution. So, we didn't really try to create anything new with this. We really tried to identify where are the good ideas, and that's where the college needs to invest its equity efforts going forward. So, the subcommittee got together. We went through all the old plans, and we went through all the unit plans and put them together. This is just an example of a few of them. You have the, the entire list in the executive summary, and then it's even spelled out more in the plan. So, this has been shown to all the constituencies except classified staff. We weren't able to do it. We had a very short timeline. We didn't get the data until, the final data until April, and then we were told you have to have this done, well, now. Now was our last opportunity to approve it. So, we weren't trying to reinvent the wheel. The real thing that we tried to emphasize to all the constituencies was, these are the ideas the campus has now. This is where we're going forward for the next three years, but, and it might sound cliche, but the Student Equity Plan is a living, breathing plan. These things aren't etched in stone. If something pops up in six months that addresses a disproportionate impact, absolutely, equity funds can still be used to support it. Or if in the future, we decide what we said in the plan, we're not really going to be able to do, or there's a better idea, we can also drop it off. And so, we really tried to emphasize that to the campus community, that this is the chancellor's office checking in, saying, here's your disproportionate impacts, laying, laying a set of research tools and analytics that will be consistent for the whole state, and then saying, what's your college doing to address these? And hopefully, with the short timeline, we had to do what we kind of had in our pockets already, but as we move forward, we'll be able to grow more robust equity ideas. I think that's it. If you have any questions, any of us, we're all here to answer. I, I don't know if the Warriors are still ahead. They were ahead.
Right, too.
But.
Wow. Okay. Were you talking about new, new communication systems?
I'm sorry?
New communication systems? Is, is a, I was just curious, what, what examples are those, or like, what has been talked about?
A lot of that comes from what we're talking about in student affairs right now and sort of the, the idea of meeting students where they're at, which means mobile technology, being more mobile-friendly, allowing students to submit documentation online, do digital signatures. See, right now, like, to submit a residency form, student has to bring a piece of paper and two things down to our office and have it signed off by two people, and then they get their residency updated. Can we do that more online? And a lot of that honestly is already, the ball is moving forward, and Howard could probably talk more about it, about better ways to contact and communicate with our students.
It's been a while since we've had you in here, Chris.
I know. Well, I got two kids since last time I was here, so I'm a little busy.
Well, I, I don't know if I speak for the whole board, but I miss you.
I miss most of you.
Thank you, Louise. I'm sure you were a, a big piece of this, so.
I have, I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry to interrupt the kind of love fest that's going on, but.
Move approval. Move approval.
I think there was a, a group identified, I think it was the.
No, we haven't, we haven't approved it yet, so we're not really supposed to discuss it.
Move approval.
Do I have a motion by trustee Baldini? Do I have a second by trustee Rios?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, shoot, sorry.
Clear now. The love fest can happen before we do that, but. Oh, it is.
Procedure.
So, my question about the group that, I think you said, was it applies or enrolls, but doesn't actually come to the college? Is that from high school, or is it, you know, from the community? And how do you try to reach those or fix that?
Yeah, well, it's all applications. So, it's, it's looking at our entire, the, the whole population that applies. And since we're open access and our application's free, we have thousands of students that apply every year that actually don't come. And so, that's where that measure is derived from. And one reason we selected minimum equity for that one is honestly, working a lot with outreach and matriculation services. If a student is thinking about coming here, our, our business model is encourage them to do the application, even if they're just thinking about coming here. To me, it's, it's more of a four-year measure, you know, that they're applying to us, where they look at students who apply and how many of them actually enroll. For us, it's not really how we've been doing business, and that's one reason we accept, we decided we'll go after the minimum equity goal for that one, because we're, it's going to require us to overhaul the way we think about outreach and bringing in new students. I hope that answered a question a little bit. But yes, it is all students, not just high school students or a certain age group or anything.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I, I have one question, too. Kind of a follow-up. It's not, you know, the abandoned shopping cart piece? I'm not, you know, do we track, is there a way to track? How many folks kind of, you know, start the admissions process and then just fall away?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, well, plug for my program, Project Rise, we actively do that, and we, we try to get a hold of them. If, like, they do the application, and it's been a couple of months, and we let them know, hey, you did the application, you have new, I mean, we have some students, they do the application, they do the orientation, they do a FAFSA, and then still don't come, but that is one thing that we are moving toward, and especially in student affairs, we're moving towards a much more proactive model to try to address some of that, to encourage these students, like, hey, why, why aren't you coming? It also, you know, if you read the statistics, it really contributes ultimately to retention, to get that proactive model going, let them know the college is really paying attention to them and following up on them, so.
I think it'd be good to have Howard come back and, and speak now, but on a strategic enrollment kind of conversation. That would be really interesting. And, and also, just to, if I may, to, to add to the point on the tools, the communication tools, or the technology tools, some of that is built into that as well in terms of tracking and to be able to utilize technology to assist in those personal efforts as well. But of course, the personal efforts, as Chris alluded to, are, are very key.
That was my question. Is it easier to capture this data now? Are there, like, better program software?
I think, well, and I'll let Howard, I'm sure wants to chime in on this, too. That's some of the technology that we're hoping to invest in, that will allow us to create more a customized model for students. So, based on where they are in the matriculation process, they open up a phone app, and they might get more customized messages, they might get specific emails from the institution based on what classes they're enrolled in even. So, that's sort of the effort. So, I'd say, yes, we're moving in the right direction. There are things out there that will make our job a lot easier, and I think we're investing in them now.
I'm sure the board hopes to see it soon.
Can't wait to show you.
Anything else? I'm going to continue with the love, love fest. It's all interesting stuff, and what you guys do is important, so, thank you. Alright. Sixteen point two. This is a M O U, Memorandum of Understanding with Mentis. It's an action item. It's, I don't know if you guys are all familiar with Mentis, but I do sit on the board, and I think it's a wonderful organization, does a lot for the community, and I'm going to recuse myself, but I'm going to.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion by trustee Baldini and a second by trustee Baker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I am recusing myself from that, but with my recusal, the motion carries. Thank you. Next item, seventeen. This is general information. We do have an action item. This is seventeen point one. S P D C twenty nineteen, Napa Sonoma Subboard Agreement Amendment. Anyone?
Move approval.
A motion by trustee Baker.
Second.
Second by trustee Dodd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving to eighteen, Board Policy Review and Adoption. We do have, one, two, three, well, B P twenty-one hundred, thirty-five, sixty, forty, twenty-one, seventy-one, twenty, seventy-one, thirty. These are first readings. I'm sure everybody's looked at on their information. Do we have questions or discussion on these? Alright. Good trustee, alright. And eighteen point two. This is second reading. This is action. Board policies, fifty, thirty-five, fifty, fifty-two, fifty-one, thirty, sixty-six, twenty, sixty-seven, fifty, and seventy-three, forty. Do we want to hammer on these ones anymore, or are we good to approve with second reading?
Move approval.
Or second.
Motion by trustee Rio, second by trustee Goff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I, I just have a statement about the, the, on the parking. There was a comment at the Citizens Advisory Committee of the Napa Valley Transportation Authority, that we don't charge enough for our parking, which would encourage usage of buses. End of, end of statement.
And I, we were looking into that, or, right?
This, well, this is a, a different issue, which is, if I'm hearing it correctly, you know, in one way, if the college charged more for parking, more people would use public transportation. So, it's, it's a slightly different issue. Well, it's from the N V T A, right? Is that what you're saying, Michael?
Yes.
Yeah. It's not necessarily a supportive statement, but it's.
No, it's just, it's just a, they're cognizant of, apparently, they.
Do they have data for us, or, I mean?
It, it's, I could check, I'll ask Ms. Miller.
Yes, never mind.
Alright.
That could be complicated.
Yes.
Yeah.
Item nineteen, Board Reports. Nineteen point one, this is Standing Committee and Other Appointment Reports. Let's start with D A S. We do have a couple of dates in circulation right now. I don't know if we may have pinned one down this evening.
I'm not sure this, I think we tried to move this to a morning.
Yeah.
Time. We'll send out an email to that, to that crew, though.
I'm sorry, I wasn't listening.
In terms of the District Auxiliary Services Foundation, new date? Did we nail that down, Catherine? Okay, we will.
A morning date, I think I was.
I believe confirmation went out late today that it is at nine A M. on June twenty-fourth.
Right, I think I was the last one, so. Alright. V W T, trustee Segura.
I don't recall when our next meeting is, but it's sometime in August.
Well, there's, I mean, it sounds like there's a lot of good stuff happening out there, so. Legislative Affairs Committee, we have, and Audit and Finance Committee, we had a report this evening.
And the only other thing to add to, in addition to reviewing the budget, tentative budget, we also had a presentation from our auditor to kind of give us a general process and, and timeline for the next audit, so.
Rural Property Management Committee, there's been chatter. Did we get anything?
So, it looks like we have a meeting scheduled for the nineteenth at four-thirty.
McPherson Distinguished Teaching, that one is done. Nineteen point two, Feature Agenda Item Request. Do we have any new items that we want to look at?
What does our list look like? Have we looked through our list?
Our list? I'm not sure we.
List is.
Yeah, we've got it.
We had nothing proposed last month. Wait a minute, where is it? Here we go.
Here we are.
I'm still, I'd like to see it get cleaned up. Doesn't obviously have to be this evening, but.
Which one?
B P seventy, well, bids and contracts policy, B P seventy-seven hundred, I mean, review of legal services, I think some of these can go away.
North Bay Job Market, that was pretty much answered this evening by Diana and her presentation.
So, I'll go over this and shoot out an email. If anything comes to you guys, let's get, get some new stuff on this and clean it up a little bit. Yeah?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Alright. Nineteen point three, trustee and board chair reports. Let's start with our new trustee, Pablo.
Yeah, so echoing what the new A C N V C president had mentioned, we had undergone the, the student leadership retreat, and so, the newborn members newly elected are now well-equipped and prepared to conduct business. I mean, we're getting ready to start our meetings over the summer, and we're eager to begin advocating on behalf of students. I myself have been just going through the college, various departments, the various programs, just trying to understand a little bit more about college outside of my own, I guess, academic interests. So, yeah, I'm, I'm excited to be here and be part of the board.
It was a good meeting to start on tonight. I mean, you got a, was a, an emotional beginning, so. Thank you, trustee Baldini. We'll just go down this one.
Yeah, so I did a great job, Pablo, at the graduation. I enjoyed the graduation, the speeches, the presentation. If I could only find my way off to D A S., that would be better. I also attended the psych tech graduation, respiratory therapy graduation, and pinning, and scholarship, S S S Trio Dinner, all nicely done. Appreciate, you know, being able to attend. I misspoke earlier, it was eleven schools in my K through twelve, so that's, that's it. Still a lot, and I will not be here for the July meeting as presently scheduled for Thursday, July eleventh. Thank you very much. That is my report. I'll be doing fact-finding on vineyards and winery technology.
Good stuff. Thank you. Trustee Baker.
I went to the psych tech meeting and the scholarship ceremony, commencement, lunch up Valley, and then I volunteered to, at grad night, which is hosted by the college. I was here from midnight to four A M. It was freezing. I can't believe it was only a week ago. So, it was a lot of fun. And just on a personal note, of course, at our last board meeting, I dashed out of here, and it was just kind of a craziness. I, we, we just had a follow-up appointment for Nicholas this morning in Oakland. He's cleared for takeoff. He's totally fine. We, I mean, I can't even tell you how blessed we are, and I especially just really appreciated the outpouring from this community. It really reminded me of why we chose to live in Napa and why I wanted to serve in Napa, and I just, thank you all.
Thank you. I'm glad everything worked out for the best. Trustee Segura.
Went to the psych pinning, the STEM and Mesa Celebration, where I got to see a lot of wonderful engineers, future engineers, and congratulations to you, and, and you have a very bright future. Hope you come back and do something with us here. Went to this, the Foundation Scholarship Presentation, the Foundation Luncheon, where we had a lot of the donors present, and then they voiced their desire to, to make contact with. and then they voiced their desire to, to make contact with the people or the students that received their scholarships, so that they can make that connection. So, you know, hopefully that will be worked out. And yes, graduation, it was wonderful. And the Luncheon Up Valley, so highly recommended. You should go to Restaurant Up Valley. Looking forward to Saturday for the Police Academy graduation, so.
Trustee Goff.
Yeah, I just wanted to welcome our new trustee, our student trustee. I'm glad you're here. I enjoyed my first Napa Valley College graduation. I didn't graduate from Napa Valley College, even though I attended here. You guys didn't transfer like you do now, so I'm really happy our kids are able to do that. I was showing pictures earlier today. The American Canyon High School is getting their signage for Napa Valley College, American Canyon Campus, and they're beautiful. I'm just saying, it looks really, really wonderful. And I'm looking forward to the graduation this Saturday of our Police Academy as well.
Trustee Rios.
I have to apologize for missing the graduation. I was in court in Mendocino County, so I could not get back. And believe me, the graduation would have been much better. Court was fine, but I, just would have been more exciting. I did attend the Lunch Up Valley, because that was easy, and it was lunch. And it was, you know, two minutes from my office. Yeah, but I plan on being at the graduation, Police Academy graduation on Saturday.
Thank you. Trustee Dodd.
Echo trustee Goff's comments on graduation. It was awesome. I was, my cheeks were sore the next day from smiling so much. But yeah, looking forward to seeing everybody who's coming out for Saturday's Cadet Ceremony.
Thank you. I, obviously, graduation, that was the biggest group I've spoken in front of, and thank you guys for not heckling me. And then also, I attended the Lunch Up Valley. That's good. If you guys haven't been, I think you're just the only one, trustee Goff.
I'm sorry, I was teaching, so I couldn't get the day off. But next year, I will plan for that.
And that's my report, so.
And you did do a really good speech.
Thank you. I didn't even hear myself, so.
And our district attorney was amazing. I don't know who invited her, but wow.
Yes, she was.
All right, twenty-one point one, our next meeting is, as trustee Baldini pointed out, he will not be here, but that's July eleventh. It's our regular meeting. Next item, we have a special meeting scheduled for eight twenty-two, nineteen.
Yeah, we have a regular August meeting, though.
Okay.
Yes.
Two meetings in August. August is busy. All right, I'm going to adjourn us at eight twenty-nine. Thanks, guys.